Sorry, just checking a couple of things here, but I think we're good to start if you're good, Jimmy.
All right, I think we are ready to go. So do you want to give your little thing before we get cranking?
Sure. Okay, so I would like to welcome everyone to our September 8th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. We are broadcasting this live on local channel 27 and the PCT website. And we have quite a few members of the community in attendance this evening. So just before we get started, just a few brief etiquette items for the attendees. The Planning Commission Chair will open the public comment during the specific items listed on the agenda, including the general public, um, public comment item. And anyone wanting to speak will be recognized by raising their hands and we will acknowledge first come, first serve on the list here. If you are on telephone only, push star six to raise your hand and unraise your hand and star nine to mute and unmute yourself. Otherwise, if you're on a computer, you'll see the little icons on the lower hand to, to go ahead and raise your hand and unraise. Everyone will be given three minutes of time to comment and there will be a timer that will show up for that. There was this afternoon, there was an email sent out by Brittany with some, a memo with some additional comments that came in this afternoon after our agenda was posted last week. It also is posted on the agenda currently under correspondence on the bottom part of the agenda currently. So anyone out there can go ahead and look at that. I thank you for your patience as we continue this remote, um, meeting and format. And I will turn it over to Chair Benjamin to officially start this meeting.
Thank you, Bridgette. Great job as usual. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the, uh, meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Half Moon Bay for September the 8th, 2020. If you please let me call the meeting order and invite you to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
By the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as for all.
Thank you very much. As usual, we begin with a roll call. So Bridgette, let's go.
Commissioner Polgar, here. Commissioner Holt.
I am here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
I am present.
Vice Chair Reddick.
I am here.
And Chair Benjamin.
100% here.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
That is great. So, um, welcome again to the members of the public, especially those of you who are joining us for the first time. I'm Jimmy Benjamin. I'm chairing the meeting tonight. And our agenda is posted on the website. If you have a copy, you'll know that the first item on our agenda after the roll call is usually a consideration of the minutes of a prior meeting, but we don't have any of those tonight. So we're moving on to the public comment section of our meeting. This is the time when anyone who wants to speak to us on an item which is not on our agenda is welcome to do so. So if you're here to talk about the LCP update, that would be something that we talk about a little bit later. So please don't raise your hand for that now. So I will go ahead and open the public comment period and ask Bridgette if there's anyone who would like to speak to the Planning Commission on an item which is not on our agenda. Bridgette, you'll need to unmute yourself.
I will need to unmute myself. Um, we have one, one person, I believe Rob Wynden, and I'm allowing him to speak.
Thank you, Bridgette. Welcome, Mr. Wynden.
Oops.
Oh, see, can you hear me? We can. Wonderful. Thank you. So, um, I sent a memo, um, with a write-up of what I'm about to discuss earlier today. And just a second, this timer just showed up, so I have to get back to my screen here.
Sorry. Presentation.
We don't mean to, we don't mean to cut off Mr. Wynden, but I believe he's here to speak on the land use plan. Let's just.
Am I on the agenda officially then?
Yes.
Yeah, let me, we'll be talking about the land use plan surely, Mr. Wynden. If there's something else you wanted to talk about this.
No, that's, that's, that's what I wanted to talk about was the Bernardo's track, so I'll wait.
Very good. Okay, so we'll come back to you after, when we get to the public hearing for that item. Bridgette, is there anyone else who wants to speak to us on an item that is not on our agenda tonight?
I see no one.
Okay, going, going, gone for tonight. So thank you for that. The next item on our agenda is one of two public hearing items, probably the briefer of the two. This is a continuation, uh, and I believe that it's already been continued. Do we need a motion? We do need a motion. So, uh, this is a containing concerning a CDP, an architectural review for the demolition of an existing residence and construction of a new residence. At, let me see, 2909 Chelsa Vizet. And since, uh, we are not, um, considering the item tonight, I don't know staff, if you feel like I should have an item briefly open for public comment or we should go straight to continuance.
We would like you to go straight to continuance and just for the record for, for public. We announced that this would be continued at your last meeting on August 25th. We forgot to put it on the agenda when it was released on Friday, but we have added it here. The notification is, um, correct for September 8th and so we need you to continue this item to a date certain to, uh, the next meeting of September, uh, I believe it's the 22nd. And, um, the applicant is aware and we will make sure that all of our notices are properly handled. So we appreciate you managing to add this one in. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Um, could we please have a motion colleagues to continue this item?
Yeah, I would move to, I would move to continue to a date certain, September 22nd.
I second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Uh, roll call vote, please, Bridgette.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Reddick?
Yes.
And Vice, um, Chair Benjamin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Um, now we move on to tonight's main event, uh, which is the public hearing item for the final local coastal program. Sorry, local coastal land use plan update. And I believe that the staff will be making a presentation and it will bounce back and forth between us a few times. So take it away, Jill, and thank you.
Thank you, Chair Benjamin and members of the Commission. We also would like to acknowledge all the folks who are attending this session tonight. Right now, there are 30 attendees and in the room here, uh, watching you alive through Zoom, uh, cast as well as we now, uh, PC TVs, also putting this out. So we, you have a nice big audience as, as you should. And we welcome everyone to this public hearing on the local coastal land use plan update. In overview, uh, it is our pleasure to note tonight that this is a decision-making meeting for the Planning Commission. Up to this point, we have been in study session format. Before you is a consideration to recommend the local coastal land use plan update to city council for their approval and adoption. With respect to this, we continue to provide guidance, uh, about conflict areas. In this case, you have been briefed on your areas of potential conflicts. Under the Political Reform Act, the Commission can oversee general plan and local coastal program updates. However, if changes are proposed to land use designations or other policies affecting a specific parcel near property owned by a commissioner, that commissioner may need to recuse himself or herself from that part of the discussion and decision-making process. At the end of staff's presentation tonight, Winter King, our Deputy City Attorney, will provide more specific direction on how we will be handling, uh, commission deliberations to make sure each commissioner has an opportunity to recuse if necessary. With that, we can move into our presentation. This has been a multi-year process. I, um, personally have been involved since 2015. I know it started before I came on board. And this has been, uh, some of the most challenging and also rewarding work, um, that we have been involved in. And the pleasure has been in working with the community, the General Plan Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission and of course, the city council. The Planning Commission has been especially involved. You have received many presentations on the local coastal program, land use plan update, particularly over the past two years, you've had 13 study sessions. Tonight, you will receive a staff presentation with a high-level overview of the land use plan update and highlights of the final recommended revisions. Staff has been preparing revisions, uh, based on, uh, careful work that we've been doing with community members, landowners, other agencies, including the Coastal Commission. At the end, typical to your, uh, format, uh, there'll be time for clarifying questions from, uh, commissioners. Then a public hearing and I see we say there, public comment, uh, we should, we should be clear, this is a public hearing. And, um, that will be prior to, uh, the deliberation by the Planning Commission. And if you are prepared to do so, uh, to take your action tonight. With that, I will now turn it over to Brittany Clazalino. Brittany is our associate planner, who has been, uh, project managing this for, for some time and she will cover, uh, the highlights of, of changes and things you need to know.
Thank you, Jill, and good evening Commissioners. So I will just give everyone a quick reminder of why we're here. The city is located entirely within the coastal zone and is therefore subject to the California Coastal Act. The city implements the coastal act through its land use plan, which specifies the allowable kinds and locations and intensities of development in the city's jurisdiction and the resource protection and development policies necessary to meet the requirements of the coastal act. The city's land use plan was first written in 1985, last updated in 1993 and went into effect with adoption of the zoning code, zoning map and subdivision code in 1996. So this 2020 land use plan update represents the city's reexamined and refreshed policy approach for carrying out the coastal act in a way that addresses changed conditions since the 1996 effective certification. The updated land use plan reflects current community priorities and anticipates future needs with a new planning horizon of 2040. Overall, the land use plan includes updated requirements to protect sensitive habitat areas, maximize public access, concentrate development in existing areas, and assure adequate public services for anticipated growth. Uh, oh, excuse me. The land use plan also addresses several new topics since the 1996 document was certified. And these were either not yet concerns as of 1996 or were otherwise not acknowledged in the 1996 plan, including climate change, sea level rise and environmental justice. So the land use plan has many cross-cutting subjects with the city's general plan as shown on this figure from the introduction chapter of the land use plan. And while the land use plan is intended to focus on coastal act requirements, the general plan is intended to be supportive of and internally consistent with the land use plan and contains several related topics like emergency preparedness and response strategies and affordable housing obligations. So as you have seen in Appendix E, the land use plan has undergone an extensive community engagement process since it began in 2013. As Jill was speaking to, um, some of the highlights are included here, uh, including establishment of the General Plan Advisory Committee and neighborhood listening sessions in each neighborhood of the city, a number of workshops and outreach events, uh, uh, specific planning commission ad hoc committee, and 13 study sessions since 2018, um, October 2018 with the Planning Commission. And just a brief reminder of the guiding principles that were established by the General Plan Advisory Committee for guiding the land use plan and general plan update. So here's a brief table of contents of the land use plan. And you've had a number of study sessions to go through each as they have evolved over the, um, the update process. Just to highlight a few quick things, um, Chapter 2 contains most of the land use plan's housing and growth management strategies. Chapter 3 considers the capacity of public works infrastructure and systems and projected demand. Chapter 4 provides protections for prime agricultural soils and supports the city's ag operations. Chapter 5 has a primary goal of ensuring coastal access and recreation opportunities, including with the lens of environmental justice. Sorry, didn't mean to skip this slide. Chapter 6 includes policies to conserve and restore environmentally sensitive habitat areas, wetlands and watercourses, and to improve coastal water quality and hydrology. Chapter 7 includes a, um, number of strategies for sea level rise and climate change and, and adaptation and, um, addresses a range of environmental hazards that can occur within the city limits. Chapter 8 includes policies and updated mapping to protect cultural resources, um, including as consistent with the Coastal Commission's recent tribal consultation policy guidance. And finally, Chapter 9 identifies visual resource areas throughout the city with updated mapping. There are a number of appendices to the land use plan update that provide additional information, including a glossary that defines terms found throughout the land use plan. And I will turn it over to Jill to go over the recent final recommended revisions.
Thank you, Brittany. All right. So as you know, uh, this hearing was originally scheduled for August 25th and we continue to tonight due to the active fires in San Mateo and Santa Cruz counties. For the August 25th hearing, uh, we had prepared a document of recommended revisions. And since that time, we have continued to meet with and coordinate with the other, other folks that I've already noted, Coastside County Water District and California Coastal Commission staff in particular, as well as other interested parties, property owners. And, and we've also received communications and then reviewing, uh, the input that has come in. This coordination has resulted in additional refinements for the final recommended revision. For the most part, these are minor and, um, um, the vast majority of them are intended to provide clarification. Uh, next slide. So, um, with respect to our water district, uh, they have provided a letter expressing general support. We also want to just acknowledge, as we did in the staff report, uh, how much collaborative time, uh, they were able to provide to, to city staff. We really appreciated that. And we were able to coordinate on a number of revisions to clarify jurisdictional needs, procedures and practices. Uh, we didn't give the water district a lot of time before our draft came out and, uh, this was really, uh, good time well spent with them. And, uh, we appreciate also that they submitted the letter to, to you so that the Commission understands what the process looked like from that perspective. With respect to the, um, California Coastal Commission highlights, they've also provided a letter expressing general support and an overview of the topics that they have been discussing with staff over the past few weeks. And again, mostly these have been clarifications requested by their, uh, their technical staff. They have many different, uh, technical staff members working through our plan and Brittany already reviewed, uh, a number of the topic areas. Of note, uh, Coastal Commission staff in, in meeting with us, um, confirmed that farmer worker housing is, is a coastal act priority use. And this, um, you will note that there were quite a bit of revisions associated with capturing that correctly. Uh, it, this change, um, affected Chapters 1, 2, 3 and 4, um, specifically some background materials in the introduction. How we, uh, consider coastal act and local priority uses and their definitions in Chapter 2. Reservations for, uh, public works infrastructure in Chapter 3. And of course, Chapter 4 is the agriculture chapter and it's, um, very important in, in relationship to all the definitions in that chapter. We also do expect additional comments from Coastal Commission staff on more topics that would come along to city council. This includes, uh, uh, our environmentally sensitive habitat area buffers, or as we refer to our ESHA buffers. And, uh, they knew that we were working with, uh, the Coastside County Water District on, um, that part of the public works chapter. So they were waiting for us to complete that. That said, they don't, I don't think they're expecting to have game-changing comments. We've been, this isn't the first round of comments that has been received from Coastal Commission's tab on, on this work. Uh, we've incorporated everything we have been able to do so up to this point, um, with, with some areas where we have, as staff, uh, pointed out, some local, uh, differences and needs and discussed those with, with our Coastal Commission colleagues. And, uh, they've been really amenable and understanding of, of what those, um, community, um, priorities are relative to their direction. And then finally, we, we do have an array of additional letters. Most of them are from property owners and business owners, uh, Rocket Farms, uh, Casamira, North Wave Crest, um, landowners and in the North Wave Crest Plan Development Area, as well as landowners in the Bernardo Station subdivision. Those, those are the, the key, uh, pieces of input that you got in your packet. And we're happy to highlight any area of revision that you are interested in, but we're trying to keep our staff presentation brief tonight. We've been presenting, um, a lot about this document for quite some time now and it's been out for quite some time as well. So we, we just want to, um, wait and be responsive to, to any comments, questions or explanations that you're looking for. Brittany's prepared a series of backup maps, so if any maps come up, um, that you want to look at, they're available to you. And, uh, we're happy to, to entertain those kinds of questions. I'm now going to, um, turn this over to, uh, Winter King, our Deputy, uh, City Attorney, to, uh, walk through the conflict of interest process.
Hello and, uh, good evening Commissioners. As Jill mentioned at the outset of the meeting, um, we'll be following just a slightly different, uh, procedure than normal for commission deliberations tonight. And this is to make sure that, um, all Commissioners have an opportunity to discuss and raise, and you know, questions that they may have about the land use plan while, um, allowing each commissioner to comply with the requirements of the Political Reform Act and its implementing regulations. So, um, in brief, these regulations allow the commission to vote on the land use plan, even though individual Commissioners own real property that will be, um, subject to it. However, if any commissioner wants to discuss land use designations or other policies that are applicable to specific identifiable parcels near another commissioner's, um, residence, we need to provide an opportunity for the, um, home-owning commissioner to recuse him or herself for that portion of the discussion. So the area, um, which we're referring to as an abstention area around each commissioner's, um, real property is a 1,000-foot, um, circle. Um, and we're being, um, uh, extra cautious on this by using 1,000 feet. There were recent changes to these regulations that expanded that bubble out from 500 to 1,000 feet. There's some flexibility, uh, in those as the property gets farther away. But, um, in an abundance of caution, uh, what we're going to be working with is a map that shows 1,000-foot circle around each commissioner's home. And we're going to call that the, uh, abstention area for each. So, um, Brittany, I don't know if you or Jill, I don't know who is, um, doing the PowerPoint, but I think we have a slide that shows, uh, kind of large-scale map. Um, there we go. Thank you. So this is a map of the land use plan that has, uh, each of the Commissioners' abstention areas on there. When we get to commission deliberations, we will have, uh, individual maps that we can show, uh, for each commissioner, which will be a little bit easier to see. Um, so the process, um, but this shows it kind of at a large scale here. Um, the process for the hearing then will be, um, uh, staff presentation, which we've, um, already, um, heard. Uh, and then we'll have the public hearing, uh, component as normal. Uh, and as always, Commissioners may ask clarifying questions, but will not be expected to or encouraged to express any opinions at that point. When we proceed to the deliberations, um, we're actually going to start with, um, uh, going through each Commissioner's abstention area and asking the other Commissioners if there are any land use designations that they wish to discuss that could impact another Commissioner's abstention area. If there are discussions that the commission wants to have about these designations or other policies that apply to specific identifiable parcels in those abstention areas, we'll provide an opportunity for the affected commissioner to recuse. Uh, and in this Zoom world we're in, that means either logging out of the Zoom meeting entirely or simply turning off your camera and your mic for that portion of the conversation. And we'll repeat this process, um, as long as it takes to allow the commission to discuss any specific policies that might be in the abstention areas. And, um, and when we are finished with that process, we will move on to a more general discussion of the plan and policies that affect the city more generally. And all the Commissioners, regardless of whether you, um, were required to recuse yourself for an individual discussion, are allowed to participate in the more general discussion of these, uh, broadly applicable policies. Then, when it comes to, uh, once deliberations are an, an end and there is a final motion, uh, on the floor, whether to recommend, uh, the, um, land use plan to the city council, all Commissioners may participate in that final kind of up or down vote on that motion. So, um, I will be assisting once we get to deliberations, since I know this is a, a little bit of a, a different. since I know this is a little bit of a different process than we're used to. But that's the general process we'll be following for the deliberations tonight.
Were you passing it back to the chair or are you back with us, Jill?
I am briefly back with you and then it will be yours, Chair Benjamin. This is just queuing up the next phase of your session with, as our city attorney was just describing, your clarifying questions where we want to make sure that we're not having deliberation or direction coming through those questions. These are really needing to be narrow Q and A with staff. And we are happy to do that now and then followed by your public hearing. And at this point, you have 32 folks in attendance to our Zoom meeting. Thank you.
That was the conclusion of the presentation? Okay, I catch on fast. Okay, so based on what I heard tonight, it sounds like the first step, if I understood Winter correctly, is that we have a chance for any commissioners to ask any questions about their abstention areas and to identify them if they see fit. So I'm going to begin by inviting my, oh, looks like you have a question, Winter. Yes.
Yeah, actually, I think at this point, we're just at the clarifying questions pointing to the agenda. And then we'll do the public hearing portion just as normal. And then once that is concluded, then I will, we can put up the abstention area maps and see if anyone wants to talk about specific policies in another commissioner's abstention area.
Very good. Never get there too late, I guess. So now's the time, colleagues, for your clarifying questions. Obviously, we're not expressing opinions yet. So who would like to begin if you have any? I am seeing a dearth of questions. All right, in that case, I think it's time for us to open the public hearing. If there's no objection, I'm going to open the public hearing for this item. And I am going to ask Bridgette to play traffic cop for us and help us bring the speakers to us. And we look forward to hearing their opinions.
Sure. Okay, the first one I have is a gentleman by the name of Bob. So let me allow him to talk. Should be able to unmute Bob and then speak. There you go.
Welcome, Bob.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners and staff and others. Slide one, please, of a presentation.
Let me, I'm just figuring out this here. So let me just pull that up really quickly. One moment, please.
Okay.
Just need to open, oops, I'm sorry, file here. And place your timer on pause. Okay, I will share my screen and open.
Great.
There you go, Bob.
Yes, yes. So I'm Bob Glenn. My wife Kathleen and I have lived in Half Moon Bay. No, we're not quite ready for that slide yet. Let's go, let's go back. Or make believe we're there anyway.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, we've lived in Half Moon Bay in Casamira Homeowners Association since 2004. It seems to us that the land use planning update that you propose will cause the most scenic section of the coastal trail to disappear. So where is this? Slide two, please. So it's about 100 yards, one football field in length, from the end of Marada Road to the beginning of State Park. So how scenic is this? Slide three, please. Well, the city of Half Moon Bay has used its picture on the cover of some of their official reports. How well used is this section of the coastal trail? Slide four, please. I'd guess that almost everyone on this Zoom has been there or knows well of it. Slide four, please. Okay, we have that. So if this section of the coastal trail disappeared, where would the people go? Slide five, please. No, we need to go, we need to go to one more slide. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure I'm following you. So go ahead.
Okay. So it would go in a trail, but it's not really a coastal trail. Next slide, please. So a trail, but not at all a coastal trail. Next slide, please. It really doesn't have to be this way. You could change the LU plan update to keep the coastal trail coastal. And last slide, please. Why would the city not want to keep the coastal trail coastal? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bridgette. Next speaker, please.
I have Matt Meltz. Okay.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. My concern is the coastal development of the highway bicycle paths, pedestrian areas for safe travel and no parking and emergency easement for emergency vehicles. We see in a lot of other counties and cities that the bicycle paths are painted and they are subject to only pedestrian or cycling traffic and/or easement for emergency vehicles to pass through. Is the city working on any of these items?
Yeah, we don't normally have a dialogue, but we've logged the question. I didn't want you to feel like you had to waste presentation time to ask.
Do you have further comments?
Are you still listening?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure you had further comments. Or if you did, you can still speak. You still have a two minute timer going.
Yeah, that was my main thing after this weekend and other weekends like that. I've lived on this coast side for the better portion of my life. I grew up here, went to school here. And I'm concerned about the ever growing population and the ever growing traffic and the safety issues for not only the safety of people getting to emergency services and emergency services reaching to, you know, fire and things like this. I think that having clear and defined pathways, a slight widening of the roads on 92, allowing turn lanes for local commerce on 92 and allowing safe passage for bicyclists and pedestrians, as well as most specifically, emergency vehicle passage. That's my final.
Thank you very much, Matt. We appreciate the comment. Bridgette?
I have. Let me just, Rod Wyden. And let me just remove, allow him to talk.
And you can.
Yep, there you are.
Wyden. Great, thanks. Glad I'm speaking at the appropriate time now. There's three areas I would like to touch on. As regards to the Bernardo Station tract area, I represent a group of owners. We own somewhere between two and three acres of land, undeveloped land in that region. And the plan suggests lowering the zoning of our area to low density. The current zoning is R1B1 and it is medium density. So it's actually a change. We're not asking for an increase in density. We're asking that guys can retain what we already had. And the three points I'd like to bring up are obviously, you know, Happin Bay needs to support low income residents with affordable housing. And we'd like to help with that. And we believe that we need the medium density to justify the cost of that development for affordable housing in that area. So that's the first area I'd like to touch on. The second is that, you know, we're not asking for a change to the zoning. We're asking that it be retained. I believe that the recommendation was that it be brought into alignment with an existing regulation that such tanks require 15,000 square foot lots. And the idea, I believe, was to bring them into alignment with each other. But there's an alternative to that. And that's for the Planning Commission to work with our team to allow the development of this as a combined whole. And this is something new where all the landowners, we're all kind of banding together. And we're trying to attract a larger developer that needs a large chunk of land to do a project. And that that would justify the cost of providing a proper public sewage for the region. And we need the medium density to attract that. And we do have one developer that's interested and we're contacting others. The third area was that in the environmental plan, it did mention environmental wetlands issues. I don't believe that that is significant for our particular project. Our group has never objected to making reasonable accommodation for environmental issues. That is fine with us. And any proposal that we make would accommodate that. Also, I'd like to point out that, at least in the past, and I believe that this is still true, that there's been leaky septic tanks in this area. And that's not good for the environment. It's actually very bad for the environment. And the other issue is that, you know, one of these lots was kind of an unofficial garbage dump for a number of years. There were old cars on it and junk piled up. And it was cleared off by myself at considerable cost and effort. None of those things are particularly good for the environment. And I'd just like to point out that not all medium density development is bad for the environment. And we need the medium density to justify the cost of laying a proper public sewer for this region and address that issue. So that's pretty much what I would like to cover.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wyden.
Next is Kelly Kramer.
Hello, everyone.
Yeah, good live.
Welcome, Miss Kramer.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelly Kramer. And I am also one of the homeowners of the townhouses in the Casamira HOA complex at the end of Marada Road. And I just want to make two quick points. One about me personally and one about Happin Bay in general. First of all, if these townhouses are destroyed because we cannot stabilize the bluff, I fear that I will be financially destroyed also. I was lucky enough to find this property and put all of my savings into the down payment. And I have a mortgage. And I fear that I will have to go into personal bankruptcy or foreclosure if these properties are destroyed. Now, regarding the future of Happin Bay, if this land use plan takes our 10 houses, then every other person on the coast will question if they're next. Six years ago, when I bought this place, I never would have thought that I would be in this position. There are currently at least five other multimillion dollar homes that are as close or closer than we were a few years ago. So essentially, if we're not able to protect our properties from the erosion, then all the properties near the coast would eventually be at risk. And homeowners or potential homeowners in Happin Bay would be hesitant and know that they are not allowed to protect their homes and mitigate erosion issues should they occur. So I would fear that this would impact the overall housing market in Happin Bay and would significantly degrade the reputation of Happin Bay as a desirable place to live. So I ask you to please work with us to save this property so that we can maintain the beauty of the coast side and be consistent with the landscape that's all along this section of this beautiful and valuable coastline and keeping Happin Bay a desirable place to live and with a very strong supportive community. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kramer. Bridgette?
We have, next is Rod Young.
Hi, this is Rod. I think I'm unmuted at this point.
You are.
As I said, my name is Rod Young. And my wife and I own one of the 10 Casamira townhomes. And we're at 28 Marada. Castle Mira has been working for more than three years to gain approval for a seawall to protect those homes. Reviewing your proposed plan was a shock and very disturbing to all of the owners. And we're concerned that the proposed plan will not only prevent construction of any seawall needed to protect our homes. And they've been there for almost 40 years. But they will also, the plan will also ensure that $20 million of homes and public infrastructure will collapse into the ocean or otherwise be destroyed in the next three years. Three years is a pretty short time. This will be devastating. Casamira is shocked to learn that this is something the city wants. But that's what this plan looks like. With the stroke of your pen and the addition of just a few words in the coastal plan, Half Moon Bay effectively reversed the city's support for our seawall project. Under the Coastal Act and the Half Moon Bay Coastal Plan, we have viewed our Casamira homes as existing structures and therefore entitled to protection under the Coastal Act. The proposed plan update unlawfully, in our view, seeks to change the definition of existing structures as that term has been used in the Coastal Act. In other words, the update plan views our homes as no longer existing and therefore, protection of them no longer allowed. With these changes to the plan, you are asking owners of homes built in 1984 with both Half Moon Bay and Coastal Commission permits to destroy our homes and absorb the financial loss. Does anyone believe that this change by Half Moon Bay is fair? The city's adoption of this plan as written will likely constitute a taking under the California and US constitutions. And the city will be liable for those 20 to 30 million in taking damages. This is remarkably similar to Half Moon Bay's decision 12 years ago to designate the Beechwood property as wetlands so that the developer could not build houses. That was found to be illegal taking. The city lost a lawsuit and had to settle by paying the developer $18 million. Why is this kind of risk in Half Moon Bay's interest? The city's proposed plan has a section labeled shoreline management plans. It proposes to develop plans for shoreline areas subject to erosion, prioritizing armored areas such as Surfers Beach and Marada Road. Half Moon Bay will coordinate with Caltrans, San Mateo County, and the Harbor District on this project. The entire length of Marada Road on this coast is currently protected by rip rap, except our Casamira homes on Marada, which only have temporary rip rap. Structures in this road are both old and new and both homes and commercial buildings. Why is Casamira treated differently and not part of this shoreline management plan? That was all my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. We appreciate your comments.
Next, we have Uma Nutaki, and I will allow her to speak.
Welcome, Ms. Nutaki.
Thank you. Thank you to the members of the county. I'm Uma Nutaki, and I hope you are able to hear me.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So I'm the landowner from the Bernardo Tract and we would definitely like to, like the city to consider the change in the zoning that supports medium density to support better land use by concentrated development. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Matt Mow is speaking again, or he'd like to. He's got his hand raised, so it's just.
Have we heard from all the other?
Yeah, everyone else, oh, now I just got like six people all of a sudden. Let me go through the people who have not spoke yet and we'll see if Matt still has any questions after that.
We'll ask the commission whether they'll entertain more speakers, but I want to be sure everyone has a chance to talk to us.
Yeah, we have one, two, three, four, five more. So that just instantly happened. So okay, the next person I have is Stuart Schleserman. I'm sorry if I pronounced that incorrectly. Let me move you over. I'm going to have to promote you to panelist. It doesn't give me any other choice. So just one moment, Stuart. Okay, I'm going to ask you. Okay, Stuart, you're next. You can speak.
Oh, great. Thank you. So I, first of all, thank all of you for all the work and effort that you put into this. But I also wanted to bring up some concerns regarding, I also live at Casamira, have a place there. And you've already heard from others how this, your new proposals will affect us. But when I was out, you know, over this very hot weekend and I just saw how many people were going up and down that trail and how many people and families were enjoying it, I, you know. I mean, obviously I want our home saved. I, you know, I want all our homes saved of everyone who is involved in this and who would be affected by your decisions here. But, you know, when I looked at all the families and people who've just come out to use this for a day and go up and down that coastal trail, it would be really, it would be tragic if we lost that. And, you know, to, I think Rod mentioned that we had a plan to put a seawall in. Along with that, we had plans that we were going at two hour cost, put in some stairs down to the beaches so there could be easier, better and safer access. I was surprised how many people were struggling down to get down various parts of the trail to get down to the beach so they could enjoy the beach and go swimming with their families. And we, you know, proposed doing this, but none of this will be possible if this, if this new land use goes into effect. So I would really, I know you put a lot of effort into this and looked into this, but I would really appreciate, we all would appreciate that you take another look at how this, your decision here will affect not just us, the landowner, the landowners and homeowners all along this area, but also the multiple families that come out and enjoy these wonderful beaches and the great things we have to offer on the California coast. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schleserman. And I hope I said that right, too.
It's Schleserman, but. It's okay. Stuart works. Thank you.
Okay. Oops, sorry. I'm trying to remove him. Sorry. Okay, so let's go with Mark and I'm going to have Mark speak and I will move Mr. Schlesman over. So let me let Mark allow to talk and then I just need to move him out of panelist. Okay, Mark, you should be able to speak.
Bridget, thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, Chairman Benjamin and Commissioners. I'm Mark Massara. Thank you for your continuing effort to evaluate and clarify the proposed LUP. We've carefully considered how to convey concerns about the LCP, given the expedited schedule here and the COVID pandemic constraints associated with these hearings. But given the very significant modifications proposed to the 1996 LUP, it certainly isn't easy. And that includes the voluminous modifications just set forth for this hearing. While we have dozens of suggested policy modifications for your staff, it's obviously not possible to discuss these or their implications in any meaningful way tonight or within these three minutes. Instead, I just want to focus on a couple of big picture items. First, why would you set forth a development vision in Chapter Two for the Surf Dunes PD consisting of residential and ag, quote unquote? When residential is not a coastal act priority and agriculture is not feasible, when you already have a proposal and a specific plan for commercial recreation? Look at the 1996 LUP and a myriad of planning analysis since then regarding soils, drainage, lack of water, adjacent residential. All of these things, as explained in the 1996 LUP, make ag infeasible on the track and we know it. The 2020 LUP, though, acknowledges that ag in the city is infeasible and suggests and will require a variety of subsidies to be made even possible in the future. And what is this vision where we say, quote, "multigenerational neighborhood with young families, seniors and assorted other household groups of mixed income levels," unquote? And just how is something like this to be realized at the Surf Dunes Track when you also seek to impose a 15-foot height limit which absolutely forecloses affordability and is plainly inconsistent with Coastal Act Section 30222? The new LUP via a host of policies makes Affordable Coastal Act priority commercial visitors serving recreational uses impossible to achieve on the Surf Dunes Track. Do you really mean to do this? With so little time, let me just make one suggestion here. Add a policy in Chapter Two Development and within the Surf Dunes PD, simply say that commercial visitors serving land use designation is preferred and that residential, as you desire, is also allowed. And that other LUP policies are for guidance only and are not meant to prejudice or constrain master planning flexibility. Thank you, and I wish we had more time.
Thank you very much, Mark.
I'm going to unmute myself, sorry. Okay. Tom Massara.
Kelly?
There you go. Yep.
Welcome, Thomas.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and Planning Staff. I'm the attorney, Tom Roth, the attorney for Casamira Homeowners Association and its members. You've heard from several owners of Casamira Town Homes tonight. You'll probably hear from additional owners. And they're expressing concerns on two levels. First, they're concerned about the loss of their homes if the LCP update is adopted by the city because it won't allow them to build a shoreline protective device or seawall that's relatively short in order to protect their homes that have been there for nearly 40 years. They've also expressed concerns about the loss of one of the most scenic stretches of the coastal trail, not only in the city of Happin Bay, but also along the entire coast of California. And the homeowners asked what I think is a fair question. Is this really what the Planning Commission and the city of Happin Bay intends to happen? Does it intend to mandate that these homes fall into the ocean and that the scenic trail fall into the ocean? I think an important related point is that the city is not legally obligated to adopt an LCP amendment that creates this type of devastation. The city planning staff relied on guidance documents primarily from the Coastal Commission. And those guidance documents are exactly what they say they are. They are guidance. They are not mandatory. It is within the city's authority and prerogative to simply reject provisions or modify those provisions if they don't make sense in the city of Happin Bay. So these homeowners implore the Planning Commission and staff to rethink their approach to shoreline erosion and manage retreat. And if the city is unwilling to step back and reconsider those provisions, there are a couple very simple things that the Planning Commission could do tonight to try to right this wrong. First, the city could exclude Casamira, which is its own PUD, from the LCP and simply leave this area up to the Coastal Commission to regulate through coastal development permits. Second, and alternatively, the city could add a provision to the LCP update that requires the city to pay just compensation as required by the constitution if the homes are destroyed due to bluff collapse. And the city will not allow the homeowners to implement a shoreline protected device to protect their homes. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roth.
Looks like we have Mike for next.
All right.
There he is. Go ahead, Mike.
Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Sorry, I, I have to respond to a comment earlier about Beechwood. There's a lot of misunderstanding in the community of what happened there. And what actually happened there was that the judge ruled that the wetlands that were in place and were legitimately wetlands were accidentally created by the city when it did a flood control project in the mid 1980s. Now, think about it for a bit. If you're doing a project for flood control, isn't the place wet already? So it was a bizarre decision and the refusal of the then city to appeal that case cost the city $18 million. Moving on. I'm still not sure about the water section of this LCP, and so I'll just have to reserve on that. And regarding workforce housing, I have so many questions that remain unanswered, especially what we do with Measure D relative to these things. I have questions about why we would have any subdivision relative to those things because a lot of changes in state law later, lately would almost indicate we shouldn't subdivide anything because it multiplies. I don't know what happens if a business that's building this workforce housing goes under. Who becomes the Simon McGree that kicks everybody out? And I really do not think it's good practice, environmental practice, to construct housing out of the core. We were doing good when we concentrated on the core. Creating 300 places outside the core is worse than counterintuitive. And it actually creates more traffic than if the housing is in the core. I'm going to let it go at that. I understand that you'd like to pass this thing, so I guess that's what's going to happen. But I guess that we'll have a lot further steps. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Okay, so Mike. Next person we have is Casey Branscombe.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time.
Welcome back, Casey.
Yeah, I feel like we've traveled a long road together. And my comments tonight might surprise you. You know, I have slogged through every detail of this plan and really looked at it from the point of view of how do I make this work as a business owner and as a 16-year resident? And someone who is a family farm and in an agricultural business. And I heard Mark Massara's, Massara say, which is true, that in 1996 and even in 1983, when the urban reserve was created, that agriculture, you know, as we know it, was no longer economically viable in Happin Bay. But what this plan represents, and the reason I can be excited about it, is that you are re-envisioning agriculture and you're starting to see it as a modern, new business that still can be true to the heritage of the rural coastal character that we all love about Happin Bay and open field uses. But you're acknowledging that the economic realities of these family farms are that we have to have housing for our employees. We have to have ancillary uses. We have to serve visitors. We have to have a flexibility to, in my case, for example, have horses and equestrian uses within the context of being able to remain economically viable without the benefit of a future medium density residential in land use characterization. So as you take that off the table, I think it's important. And I think you're starting to, to really do that. I feel like you've listened that this last set of changes that Brittany and Jill have made and that you, as the commissioners, have undoubtedly been involved in really are, you know, starting to bridge that gap. And if you can walk the talk and follow through on this, I think we could have a great Happin Bay that balances limiting growth, environmental protection and making sure that places like the Andriata Farm and my own Branscombe Farm, Hector Farming Podesta next door, Santos and Fiorino with the Green Hearts business down on the corner there, that these urban reserve properties, you know, can be an important, useful, viable members of the community. But we need to follow through and the details are important. And that's, you know, that's why all these little changes in each of these chapters are right what makes it possible. And that's it. I just want to say, great job. It's been a really hard, hard road to get here, but I think we're, you know, we have a chance to really make something great happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Casey.
Next, I have, I believe maybe Asa. Needs to unmute. Maybe you can just unmute and then speak.
Welcome, Asa. If, we can't hear you just yet.
All right, maybe A.Sani? I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
That's me. That sounds like me. Yeah. Good evening. My name is Amar Sani. And I just want to support and speak and support of Bernardo Track, what Rob was talking earlier. I bought this little lot here 28 years ago with thinking all the issues that you're talking about, small town and rural sort of thing. And that has not transpired. But I also look at your inventory. You have a lot of issues in terms of there's no affordable housing in your city. So the, the medium density will help you. And I'm a college professor and architect for the last 47 years. And I have supported a lot of affordable housing developments. So I tell you, I know there's some people, there's a lot of politics on the environmental side. People want this, people want that. But I think some of those tracks are sitting there and then average Joe, a policeman, a teacher cannot, cannot buy a house in your community, you know? So I think you have to look into that and see how you can support the Bernardo Track to give a medium density. I think that will help your city, what you aspire, but also help some of the low income people and medium income people who cannot afford the house. So medium density will be very, very helpful in, in, in your community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Amar. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
That's okay. I'm used to it.
Well, banish you. Yes.
The next person is Peter Smith.
Hello.
Hi, Peter.
Welcome, Mr. Smith.
I, I'm also a, a landowner here in the city of Happin Bay on the southern end of the town with one of the open space tracks and the current land use plan. And I wanted to support the, the current plan as written, especially with the workforce housing overlay portion that's been put in because it will really allow the, the tracks that are the, the tracks that are currently used as open space to persist as open space. It'll allow a less restricted use of the zoning ordinances to allow caretakers to, to list and live in, live on and, and, and take care of the property. And also live in the city to take care of other agricultural uses. So I, I have a vision as a private landowner as having affordable housing on my tract that is not supported with public funds, but is self-supporting. And I think it can really happen and can be an agricultural Mecca for people to enjoy agricultural uses here on the county, on the, on the, on the coast side. So I think an excellent job has been done by the city in, in listening to, to the needs of the community and finding ways for the community to, to move forward in a way that everybody will love. So hats off to the planning, the, the Community Development Department for doing such a nice job and, and organizing all the public inputs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Next we have William Regan. Think. Be able to unmute right now. There you go.
Welcome, Mr. Regan.
So my wife-in-law and I love Half Moon Bay.
Excuse me, Mr. Regan. Could you please, yeah, turn off your speaker or turn it down so we can hear you? But don't mute yourself.
Yeah, I love Half Moon Bay. Our parents brought us here in the 40s and 50s to the beach with our brothers and sisters. Lifetime residents, peninsula. We bought our home at 18 Marotta Road in the Casamira complex 25 years ago. And we love the beauty of the sand. We love the sky and the beach, the, everything about it. But what we like most is the people on the coastal trail that we see every day. A few years ago, when there was a severe storm and the overly overgrown cypress trees got all beaten up, lots of bent branches broken, we actually arranged with the state park to, to prune those trees so that they could survive and, and last for a long period of time. And we have kids and grandkids who live here and have lived here for the last 20 years as well, in, in the city. We want Half Moon Bay to have a good, up-to-date land use plan. But as you've heard from some of our fellow homeowners at Casamira, 25 years ago, a big storm took out 25, or not 25 years ago, a couple of years ago, took off 25 feet of the bluff. And we got the Coastal Commission on emergency basis to allow us to put in some riprap to protect our property. And the city staff were with us right from the start, were very helpful. And the city gave us a written letter of support to petition the Coastal Commission. However, our permanent proposal, which when we was printed to the, presented to the commission and the staff supported it, Coastal Commission staff supported it, was turned down in a rush hearing surprisingly without prior comment and was rejected. And if we eventually are required to remove the riprap, our homes could needlessly be endangered. So just very simply, Section 740 Managed Retreat doesn't work for us. There's no way we can back our homes away from the coast and could permit a governmental entity to trigger the removal of our homes, even though we're perfectly prepared to, to keep them up. At least this section should exempt homes that homeowners want to protect but are being prevented from doing so by government action. Half Moon Bay should not become another Pacifica with homes needlessly falling into the sea. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Regan.
Okay, looks like we have no other public comments, Mr. Chair here, but we do, Chair Benjamin have Matt Mel, oh, I have a new one. G, G Mitchell is next. He has not spoken or she, he or she has not spoken yet, so we'll allow them to speak.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yep.
You can, Mr. Mitchell. Welcome.
Thank you. His first name's Glenn. So this is regarding the Bernardo Track. One of the last meetings I actually attended was a group of homeowners speaking up against rent control. And even though they were clearly the majority at the meeting, the city went ahead and voted to move forward with their version of rent control, basically on the basis that they needed to provide affordable housing and to speak for those that weren't speaking. Not for this meeting, but I could demonstrate how this type of system actually increases costs. But keeping it with the, the current discussion, my point here is that you have a group of people that are willing to propose some affordable housing options. Doesn't necessarily even mean that they need to be approved, but the, the plan apparently doesn't allow for that option to discuss or work towards something that, that might be great for our community. If the city's truly interested in affordable housing, I would encourage them to leave this dialogue open. And then just as kind of a additional side note here, I actually manage a property at Casamara that the owners aren't on board tonight, I guess, but they would definitely be in favor of what the, the other homeowners have spoken up again or for. The property that I manage, the rent is below average for the area, actually well below average. So if that were to go, there's one more affordable home option that would be taken off the market. So again, I'm, I'm just speaking up here saying, let's leave these dialogues open when possible and not postpone it for years down the road. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Glenn. We appreciate that. Any other new hints, Richard?
Yes, we have a couple. Oh, maybe not. Yes, Anne, Anne Regan. Oh, no, maybe not. I'm sorry. They keep.
Coming and going.
Yeah, and then every time I click, it clicks on a, on a different person. So, because it rotates in the, in the mix here, so. Makes things a little challenging. Okay, so seeing going once, going twice. I see no one else other than, I'm not sure that Matt Mel would like to speak again. He spoke once other time and Mark Massara is also raising his hand. Oh. Okay, I don't know if Anne Regan, okay, she's raised her hand. I'm gonna try to see if I can speak with her. She has not spoken yet. So let me try her and then I'll allow her to speak right now. Anna, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm with Bill Regan, a homeowner at 18 Marotta Road. And most of what I had planned to say has been said by others. But I wanted to just raise one point that I, I feel that as a complex, our unit and the 10 units have been a, a good thing for the community. They're designed to be fit right in with the natural setting. It's well-maintained, well landscaped. I, I think we add something to the community beyond all the other good points that other people have raised. And I just, one other emphasis on our willingness to protect our property at our own cost, at the same time providing greater beach access to the public, also at our own cost. But we have been unable to do that because we've been prevented by the Coastal Commission. I urge the Planning Commission to at least modify Section 7-40 so that this does not apply to Casamira. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So while Secret is looking to make sure there's no other new speakers, as a procedural matter, I think it's best to maintain a consistent policy with respect to public hearing items. It's not that we don't want to hear from the public, but it's difficult to give deference to one person, especially in a meeting where we have quite a large number of speakers, without giving the same right to continue to all of them. So barring objection from my colleagues, I'd like to apologize for not allowing the other speakers, sorry, the speakers who have already spoken once, to return to the floor. We certainly are reading your letters and we are paying attention to what you have said. Having said that, I don't know if any of my colleagues have objections to that policy.
Sure, her name is, oh, has his chair.
Just, I, I agree with that. I think the, the history of this commission since I've been involved is while an individual project that's on the agenda, we give wider discretion for people to speak about a specific project. I think that, I agree, I, I actually don't think, I know that I agree with the, the position as you stated. I think we've, we've covered this ground and folks had a chance to provide their feedback and along with not just this meeting, but the 100 other meetings, public meetings that have preceded this and the dozens and dozens of private meetings that I've personally been involved with outside of the public meeting. So I, I think we've, we've covered the public comment.
Any other comments, colleagues? Okay, so I'm going to apologize to Matt and anyone else who wishes to speak. I will also say that this is not the last stop. You will have another bite at the apple at the city council meeting or meetings and at the Coastal Commission meeting or meetings. So please don't feel that you've, and of course, we still read letters, as will they. Richard, has anyone else come forward to speak?
I have no one.
Have we gotten any written correspondence? Emails, that sort of thing?
And we cut off the, the time at 5:00, but I would be happy to, to refresh my email to just make sure that I don't say anything.
It's an important enough topic that I think I wanna, I wanna see.
Sure. Just one second while I refresh. I've seen nothing here. I don't know if Brittany has access to her email or if I can H and V, but I don't. See, I don't see anything here.
No, everything that I've received has been conveyed, either in the stock report or the memo that went out earlier today.
All right, in that, in that case, I'm going to close this public hearing. Thank you again for all of the comments. They were thoughtful and they have been thought-provoking, as has the correspondence that we've received. Before we move to the next section of our process here, I want to give staff a chance to respond to any comments that they might choose to, barring objection from the other members of the commission. Jill?
Thank you, Chair Benjamin. I believe that we are prepared to do so and that our deputy city attorney, Winter King, will begin with a response. Brittany also has some items and I do as well.
Jill, thank you, Chair Benjamin. And a couple of responses to some of the thoughtful comments. In particular, with respect to the Casamira homeowners and commenters and representatives, I did just want to note and remind the commission that there's a pending lawsuit between the homeowners and the Coastal Commission and the city is named as a party in that lawsuit because of the city's interest in the coastal trail. And so we won't be discussing any details related to the lawsuit here tonight. However, the, the speakers were correct that the city council did submit a letter in support of their application to the Coastal Commission for a seawall. And of course, as some of the speakers commented, the Coastal Commission did not grant the application as they sought it. And I also wanted to note that, you know, that the policies that were referred to in terms of the managed retreat are consistent with Coastal Commission guidance for handling impacts associated with climate change and sea level rise and associated bluff erosion. Of course, as you all know, the land use plan does contain what we refer to as a takings provision that provides that none of the policies adopted in the land use plan are intended to affect unconstitutional taking of anybody's property. And of course, the city can consider that policy in implementing the land use plan and any applications that might come before it in the future. And on a related note, just a reminder that this is a land use plan. Many of the policies are fairly high-level and the city will need to adopt some implementing guidance for these policies going forward. And the Managed Retreat Policy is, is one of those policies where I believe staff anticipates that there would be some additional guidance on how to implement that in the future. And, and then one quick comment on another set of issues that was discussed, and that's on the workforce housing farmworker housing and, and what happens if the, the underlying business or use changes. And just a couple of notes on the policies themselves as currently proposed and before you. Farmworker housing would be available for farmworkers on the coast side, not just at the particular establishment where the farmworker housing could be built. And the policy also includes a requirement that the housing be subject to use permit, deed restriction, or other mechanism to ensure that the housing remains in compliance with these policies, including the, the required uses and other conditions. So I think that's, that's it from me responding to some of those comments.
Thank you very much.
I will pick up from Winter's comments on Casamira. And we appreciate the community's input on the desire to protect the coastal trail. And your plan includes a number of policies that, that does this, including Chapter 5 at the high level to maximize coastal access and recreation opportunities. And then more specifically in Policy 529, and the coastal trail is specifically designated as a coastal-dependent use, which is one of the two allowances that the Coastal Act gives for shoreline protections in Coastal Act Section 30235. And then we have an additional policy to support this in Chapter 7, which does allow for shoreline protection for the coastal trail if no feasible alternative exists. There are also, just to note, numerous places along the coastal trail where there are no direct ocean views and this is not precluded by the Coastal Act. In response to Mr. Massara, we would like to note that Coastal Act Section 30222, while it does prioritize visitor-serving, commercial uses, it specifically prioritizes agriculture and coastal-dependent industry over visitor-serving, commercial uses. And that is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Benjamin and commission, we just have a few more to wrap up here. Trying to cover the, the broad topics and a few specific ones. One thing we just, we noted a couple times in our presentation tonight was that we've been working with interested parties and have had a broad invitation put, put out there for folks to meet with us. And that doesn't go away when this particular evening is over. That, that is an ongoing obligation that we have as your staff planners and we're happy to keep working with folks. And we hear Casamira will be welcome to have sessions with us so we can discuss things and especially in light of, as our city attorney described, the implementation portion of this is, is very, very important. very important. And we're happy to spend time with you and talking about these things. To that end, we have met with many and a lot of folks have also submitted written comments where, you know, several people who spoke tonight have had several hours with staff. And if they would like to submit comments as well, we encourage that. That has never been anything that we've repressed in our meetings. We just find meeting is helpful because we can explain things to each other, but following up and writing is really, really useful. And a number of people have taken advantage of that. And those pieces of input have found their way into your packets, which I know gives you plenty of time to review them. Regarding bicycle and pedestrian facilities along Highway One and the potential to use them for emergency access, that's a level of detail, probably more higher level than a land use plan policy document's going to cover. But we just want to acknowledge the speaker, their comments, and how they relate to the concern about emergency access, evacuation needs, et cetera, and that there are other planning components going on in the city with regards to mitigation for hazards and as well as the bicycle pedestrian master plan that is piecing together extensions of the East Side Parallel Trail along Highway One, which is a multi-use path that has grant funding for different segments. And the idea about having emergency access is something that is certainly compatible with some of the work that's been going on with those things and is not lost on the staff who are working on that. And in fact, our city engineer is participating tonight. He didn't need to present, but he is here to field questions and he heard that comment. So I just wanted to note that for the record. A little follow-up on workforce housing. With regards to Measure D, unless the units are specifically exempted by the city's ballot measure or through some state law, they would be counted towards our Measure D allocation process. There's nothing about this land use plan that would contradict that. Furthermore, there's employer-provided housing allowances through the state and we would refer to our city attorney and do research on whether or not those would require Measure D allocations. But that's been available to our landowners for many years and they really haven't partaken in it. So the workforce housing overlay was meant to use those allocations and we intend to take anything out of them. Note that the policy in chapter two about Measure D includes specific ballot measure language. And the exceptions are narrow. They are for density bonus units and for replacement housing units. So there's nothing beyond that. That was part of that measure. Well, so this gives us a segue to talk about Bernardo Station for a few minutes. Bernardo Station, just, there's a lot of people who got really interested in it with this version of the plan. And we want to catch them up briefly because it's important. In the 2018 December draft of the land use plan, staff tried a proposal for a planned development area. And we called it Dolores because that's one of the street names in the middle of this area, specifically to support the kinds of planning that we're hearing public comment come in on for dealing with possibly needing to expand infrastructure, address clustering of units away from resource areas, improve access, et cetera, et cetera, all the kinds of things that are required to be looked at very seriously in planned development planning. And the feedback we got with that idea was from some of the property owners who were participating was, no, thank you. We would prefer to have the zoning that we have. Well, since that time, we have received inquiries about properties in that area from folks who want to develop and install septic systems. And so we really haven't seen the kind of coordinated interest in developing the way that a planned development encourages or supports. We also recognized that we were seeing that the zoning was out of sync with the requirements for septic systems. And we've written about this quite a bit in this report, so I'll move on from that. But our proposal then in removing the proposed planned development land use designation, we really saw that we had two choices. We could just leave it the way that it is, which you're being asked to do tonight, which is the medium density residential designation. Or we could consider the low density designation because it is really consistent with the carrying capacity of the land as it is right now, without sewer service, with areas that we believe are poorly draining, possibly have some wetlands, access challenges, et cetera. We chose the low density. Obviously, lots of people came forward. You're hearing that they're really interested in affordable housing. That's great. We do want to be clear for the record. We have never seen an application of plan or anything before this round of public input for developing in Dolores for, or excuse me, the Bernardo Station area for affordable housing. So this is, we think it's probably an idea. We just don't know that there's any real planning that's happened. That said, the commission is welcome to reconsider this area, of course, to leave it the way that it is, as you've been asked to. What staff would advise is that doesn't take away any of the other requirements. The requirements for folks who want to develop without sewer, without municipal sewer systems would still require larger pieces of land to support septic. And all of those requirements for septic would still be in place. All the biological resource evaluation requirements would still be in place. There is also a new provision in the implementation portion of this land use plan update that was meant to get at areas in town that are probably not big enough for really warranting of a planned development designation to deal with smaller scale master planning. And so in this case, we have also been referring these property owners to the special development permit provision that's outlined in appendix A, which is the implementation portion of this plan and can allow for some of those kinds of planned development thoughts. So I think that covers some of the specific things. We definitely wanted to give some reassurance around Casamira. I give you a little more perspective around Bernardo Station, answer some questions about workforce housing, noting that the workforce housing covers a lot of the kinds of housing that folks who spoke about Bernardo Station were interested in. We do have some other ways at getting at this in this plan. This plan has a lot of strategies for doing so. And then I'd like to conclude and reoffer for meetings with interested parties as we continue through this process. And thank you for giving us time to respond to these comments.
Thank you for the illuminating comments, all three of you. We really appreciate it. And I want to apologize to Bridget for once calling her Sigrid, who was one of her predecessors as the Planning Commission Secretary. I cared a great deal for her, so I hope it was perceived as a compliment.
It's kind of right. I knew Sigrid and went to school with her son, so I'm not offended by it at all.
Thank you. So let's see. We had a section of clarifying questions earlier. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to ask for more winter or if you want to move to the abstention area section before we begin talking opinions. What's your take? See what I did?
I think it probably is simplest just to move on to deliberations at this point. And of course, if you have questions in the course of deliberations, Chair Benjamin, if you wish to have staff respond to questions, then that's perfectly okay.
All right, very good. In that case, let's move on to the deliberation conversation. And I believe now that we've had staff final comment, this would be the right time, if I read you correctly, for us to recount, each of us, any areas about which we might wish to abstain, so that the rest of us know if we have comments in those areas, that we can call them out and give that commissioner a chance to get out of the way.
Yes. And Chair Benjamin, if I may make a suggestion on process for this, we do have some PowerPoint slides that show each commissioner's abstention area. And it might provide a good process to just go through one by one and show the commissioner's abstention area and ask the other commissioners if they have any desire to speak about land use designations within that abstention area or any other policy as it applies to specific identifiable parcels in that area. And if there is such a desire, then that commissioner can recuse and we can kind of work our way through the abstention areas in that way.
Before we, barring objection, I think that's a great idea. Before we do, though, there are some policies that have the potential to affect areas that are outside the 1,000-foot area in the minds of some commissioners. For example, living downstream from another area where decisions with respect to policy might identify those. How do you suggest that we accommodate those things in this conversation?
And well, obviously, it's up to each commissioner to decide when and whether to recuse. This process that the FPPC regulations provides is sort of a safe harbor for potential conflicts related to home ownership. So, you know, I would suggest that maybe we first just start with the individual abstention areas, talk about whether there are any land use designations or policies as applied to lands within those areas. And then when we get to the more general discussion after the abstention area discussion, of course, if a commissioner wishes to discuss something and another commissioner believes they have a conflict, please just speak up and say it's, if we're going to talk about this, I will recuse for the duration of the discussion.
Perfect. Barring objection, why don't we move to those slides then? Thank you very much.
No objection, but through the chair?
Thank you. Yes, Rick?
May I make a suggestion that we continue the, this process as Winter King has suggested, but just so we can all look forward to a small moment of peace, maybe afterwards, take a recess for, say, five to 10 minutes after we finish this presentation.
That sounds like a grand idea. That's probably in the neighborhood of nine o'clock. So that's good thinking. Again, barring objection.
Great. And Brittany, if you could go to the next slide, which I think is the first individual slide. So this is the abstention area for Chair Benjamin. And again, I would suggest that any commissioners that wish to discuss, and you'll see that the pink line is 500 feet and the black line is 1,000 feet. So if any commissioner wishes to discuss the land use designations within the black line, for identifiable parcels within the black line, or any policies that apply specifically to property within that black line, please let us know. And then Chair Benjamin can recuse for that discussion.
Through the chair?
Oh, yes, Rick.
For the folks following at home, if there's a specific thing, Winter, if you could just clarify, if there's a specific thing that sits inside the black circle or the purple circle, those are areas of concern. But if there's something like the coastal trail, which in Jimmy's case, goes through the black circle and through the purple circle as well, that's something he can talk about generally, but he may have an issue if there's a specific part that maybe touches the Kehoe Water Course, for example. Could you just clarify for us?
Yes, that's exactly right. So the example that I think is maybe easiest, although I'm not sure that there's, well, I could use the example here. So within Commissioner, Chair Benjamin's abstention area, there is some designation of open space for conservation. If the commission wants to talk generally about that designation, Chair Benjamin may participate in that. However, if anyone wants to talk about specifically the fact of designating those particular parcels within his abstention area as open space for conservation, or maybe propose a change to the land use designations for those specific parcels, that would be the kind of discussion that, under the FPPC guidance and regulations, would be appropriate for Chair Benjamin to recuse himself from.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
So through the chair, I don't know if, we just want to say, it doesn't sound like anyone wants to talk about particular policies in your abstention area, but speak up now if you do. Otherwise, we'll move on to the next. Okay, Brittany, if you could move to the next slide. Okay, so this is Commissioner Holt. So again, this is the individual abstention area for Commissioner Holt. If any commissioner wants to talk about the particular land use designations in this area or policies as they apply to specific identifiable parcels in that area, please speak up. Okay, hearing none. I think we can move on to the next. Thanks, Brittany. And this is Commissioner Ruddock's abstention area. Again, if any commissioner wishes to speak about a land use designation in this abstention area or policies that apply to specific identifiable parcels in that abstention area, please speak up.
Just a clarifying question before I keep my silence. So the black circle, as I understand it, does not incorporate any wave crest area. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing none. Brittany, I think we can move on. And here is Commissioner Polgar's abstention area. If any commissioner wishes to speak about specific land use designations within this area or policies as they apply to specific identifiable parcels in this area, please speak up. Okay, hearing none. We can move on to Commissioner Hernandez. This looks very similar to Commissioner Polgar's, but a little bit different. So if anyone wishes to speak about land use designations in Commissioner Hernandez's abstention area or policies as they apply to specific parcels, specific identifiable parcels in this abstention area, please speak up. Okay, it sounds like no one wishes to speak about any land use designations or specific policies in any of the commissioners' abstention areas. So for our previous conversations, when we come back from break and get into deliberations, it would be good for everyone to continue to be mindful when you're speaking about particular policies, in case any commissioner feels the need to recuse. But we, after the break, can move into the discussion of all the remaining policies in the plan.
Thank you very much, Winter. Barring objection, let's adjourn for, let's be generous and call it eight minutes and resume at nine o'clock. Thank you very much, Winter. Barring objection, let's adjourn for, let's be generous and call it eight minutes and resume at nine o'clock. The bulk of our process is going to be to discuss any changes. As you know, first we'll talk a little bit, since there are no areas within the abstention area that people wanted to address specifically. We'll next talk about some matters that are outside of the abstention area. But with a document this large, it wouldn't surprise me if an item or two came up that we didn't want to talk about. We have been over this plan a lot. The public may not realize just how many hundreds, perhaps for some of us, thousands of hours we have spent with the document. So please don't interpret our light touch on one or another aspect of the document as disinterest. We are quite attentive to it. And at this point, I think we're ready to move back into our deliberations. And I want Winter and Jill to stay off mute or ready to hit the one mute button in a hurry so that you can help us go slow and careful and keep it right. But it appears to me that since there were no discussions of matters in the abstention area, the next topic of conversation for us is whether I or my colleagues would like to propose any changes to any of the land use designations that are not within an abstention area. Agreed? Heads are nodding. So colleagues, do you want to propose any changes to land use designations in areas that were not part of the abstention areas that you saw in the slides that Winter presented earlier?
I'd like to make a couple of comments, if I might, through the chair.
Yes, focusing on possible zoning changes, because we do want to talk about policies and other aspects in the next step. We'll get to that. But was there something specific about land use designation changes?
Well, there were specific changes where the residents of Casamira brought up issues of the Coastal Trail. And I just wanted to affirm that there are no substantial changes to this document that need to be made to address the concerns they've raised. As the reality we live in is that we do have climate change. It's happening every day. The Marata Beach, which is 100 yards from Casamira property, has eroded and is unusable. It's part of the Coastal Trail. And the city has a short-term and long-term plan to push this back. So for the public watching at home, the protection of the Coastal Trail is of paramount concern. And I don't think we have any substantial policy changes that are required to address the protection of the Coastal Trail. And I just wanted to mention that upfront.
Okay, I think we'll circle back around and get to those broader policy questions soon. But you weren't proposing any change in the land use designation of Casa Marata, right?
I am not.
Got it. Steve, did I see you raise your hand? I didn't.
No, no, Chair. I don't have any land use designation changes to propose for anything tonight.
Brian?
No, I also do not have any changes. And I just want to thank you, Chair Benjamin, and second your comments, because I think it's important for the public to understand that we have gone through thoroughly each of these areas over the course of a couple of years and have looked at, have done a real focused deep dive of each of the planned development areas and other areas. And Jill and Brittany have done that in a very detailed fashion. And so that is why I am now very comfortable saying I do not have any additional recommended changes.
Thank you. Sarah?
Can you hear me? Sometimes it sounds a little choppy. So I don't know, I would, I second what I heard Brian say. It was a little bit choppy, but similarly, I feel like we've done a really in-depth look at all of this. And so I don't have anything to suggest as changes to the land use. I do have other comments, but as I understand it, we're getting to broader comments about policies, et cetera, to come. Yes?
Just so. Yes, Rick.
One last comment, because we had a great number of comments on Bernardo Station as well. Just as a clarifying question, there's nothing that prevents the current property owners from coming forward collectively under the new policies and proposing changes. It's just that right now, the recommendation is to move this to low density. It is what the current proposal is. But the property owners could collectively organize and come to the city under the policies we've put forth and propose more substantial changes as a collective. Is that a fair way to characterize the situation with Bernardo Station?
I'll invite staff to answer.
Jill, I don't know if you want to take this, but yes, that is correct. There could always be a request for amendments. And as Jill pointed out, there is also a tool in the LUP that's before you that would allow some kind of more special master planning in that area.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. I'm not seeing, and speaking for myself, I'm content with the land use designations that are presented in the draft plan. So with that in mind, we'll move to discussion of goals, policies, and implementation measures. So now we're into the broader areas. And if there are questions or comments that will help us deliberate what changes we might want in those areas, I know that your colleagues are anxious to hear them. So who would like to begin? Don't all speak up at once. You know you want to begin, Sarah.
I'm actually, I hear, you guys are cutting in and out, so I'm going to move my.
She's going to shift to a telephone connection.
Can I make a suggestion, can I make a suggestion just through the chair?
Yes.
For those, for those of you who are, I do a few of these every day, for many hours every day. For those of you who aren't actively speaking, if you could move to mute, it might help Sarah's connection. I don't know if she's going to try to move her microphone and fix that, but that may be, when you're not speaking, if you could just move yourself to mute, it might help with some of the feedback that she's experienced.
Well, that might be me. I have a CPU fan going in the background. So why don't you?
Are you, Sarah?
Perhaps she's already gone.
You know what? Have somebody else go first to see if I can hear better, if I move around a bit.
Okay.
All right, I'll take the opening round.
All right, Rick.
So I've been as involved as just about anybody in this process. Certainly, I predate Jill's experience. I don't predate Sarah's experience and I think Brian's experience, as you guys were members of our advisory committee before I even got directly involved. I will say that looking through the list of people who spoke at this meeting and our last scheduled meeting where we took comments, I'm impressed by the fact the two people who've participated the most had the most supportive and pithy comments. And Casey Branscombe in particular has been an individual owner who's paid very close attention to what we've done. And we've had some very forthright conversations with her. And I'm pleased that, you know, she feels that what we've come up with is true to the heritage of the rural coastal character. So I find that very supportive. Same for Mr. Farrar, who's been a very active participant in this process for decades upon decades. I honestly, I don't see a lot that needs to be changed. I think we've really thought through these things very carefully. Things like specific projects that many people have commented on tonight, seems like those are really in the hands of our city council and the California Coastal Commission. I think we've done a yeoman's job here and a 100 meetings. I don't think there's anything more I could possibly add to the body of work. I will also comment that this is not a radical departure from anything we've done. This is built on the case history that sits before us. And there are situations where, I think Bernardo Station is the best example of this, there are clear ambiguities that have been identified. And we have worked diligently to eliminate that ambiguity and make things very clear from a planning perspective. So I don't, I don't think there's anything more I can add to this at this point. But as always, I will reserve judgment until I hear from my fellow commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holt?
Sure. Can you be able to hear me all right? So yeah, as Commissioner Hernandez mentioned, you know, I've worked on this for a good five years now as a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee and working on the Park and Recs Commission here before that. It's an interesting process because, you know, the G-PAC group had, you know, well over 20 people on it, quite a bit of public engagement there. Of course, you've had people from Park and Rec Commission engage in this project, the Planning Commission as well. Many public meetings, staff did, neighborhood gatherings, open houses in different neighborhoods around the community to have folks come and engage with it. They would table at the various events that happen in town and just, and so a lot, a real effort and a lot of public engagement. And interesting, because everybody sort of brings their own background, expertise, and, you know, passions and pet peeves to the table in these discussions. And, you know, I'm a park and open space guy. And that's sort of what I've spoken to is, you know, the public lands and trails and parks and, you know, just sort of the quality of this area. I've always been impressed with Commissioner Polgar and her deep expertise in drainage and flood control and, you know, a number of other varieties there. And I really appreciate Commissioner Hernandez diving deep into a lot of the policy end of things. And then, you know, of course, of course, then there's Jimmy, Chair Benjamin, who no detail gets passed. But it's been, it's been just really interesting to have just a lot of expertise and breadth in this community engaging into this, into this plan. You know, this was, this was a, you know, a wild weekend for the coast, Labor Day weekend, you know, extreme heat. And just, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. Fires are still burning. And I would stop and reflect on the fact that, you know, we're in a very different world today than we were when this plan started. A lot of our concerns, a lot of our interests, it's just a different place. One thing that I was, I found really interesting as I was kind of, you know, coming over social media and seeing what everybody was commenting on, was just a lot of dialogue saying, you know, when we started this process, it felt like, you know, you would hear things about, you know, we need to widen 92 to four lanes both ways, and we need Foothill Boulevard, and we need more roadway access. And, you know, for a lot of us, we thought, well, you know, you're just going to have more roads. They're going to, they're still going to be packed. You're going to cut off your community, and that's really going to impact just the character of our town. And I was heartened to see that a lot of the community members, you know, got that and really seemed to reiterate this past weekend that, you know, no, just widening things up isn't going to fix all of our problems. Certainly, traffic is still, you know, is a tough problem that we have to, you know, try to manage and to some degree that we have to cope with. But I think, you know, this plan also does a lot to really anticipate a lot of the climate impacts that we are seeing right in front of us right now. You know, fire, sea level rise, just a number, a number of, a number of the things that we're actively wrestling with and having to respond to today. Were very much central parts of the conversation five years ago as this plan was started. So the policies are, you know, well thought out, thoroughly analyzed, and I would say, you know, really forward-thinking. And from the beginning, the idea was, you know, how do we increase bicycle access on the coast? How do we make that safer for people to move around without having to get into their car? You know, how do we protect agriculture and our agricultural heritage? You know, Coastal Trail is obviously of paramount interest to this community. I mean, that's a lifeline for so many of us, any of us who dealt with, you know, the loss of the Hernandez Bridge. When that went out, an outcry that went around there, I mean, that cut off our community. And we're seeing a lot of that now with the, with the bridge in Miramar being out, which is not within the city. So, but the Coastal Trail is obviously near and dear to this community. And I'm glad to say that. I think this plan really elevates the Coastal Trail and builds a lot of policies around that. It does the same with bicycle access and really focusing development within the downtown core so we can protect that agriculture. I really appreciate the public's comments about how we can make that agriculture viable, you know, and really appreciate staff taking the time and doing the deep dive to really understand that perspective and to try to craft the policies necessary to hear what we heard tonight, which was support from some of those most vocal landowners. So that's great. That's really good work. Of course, there's always going to be questions and concerns about, you know, what happens if a certain owner leaves and that workforce housing goes away. I think, you know, there's, there's a lot in here that can help protect that. And I hope we'll continue to be able to sort of have that discussion as this plan is implemented, that we really see that it goes back to what was the, you know, the core and guiding principles of this document from the very beginning, which was a vibrant agricultural community, a walkable, bicycle-friendly community, affordable housing and affordable housing in our downtown core. And I think, you know, really a community that looks forward with regards to our future climate situation. I will just say, I think, you know, one thing I'm concerned about is, you know, this current situation with climate change, sea level rise, fires. What we're seeing right now is there is just not enough resources to deal with these situations. Fire, the, you know, Cal Fire and others are spread thin across the state, and there's not enough people to go out and fight the fires that we need to have fighting. The dollar amounts to respond to sea level rise is going to be staggering. And it's going to take a huge coordinated effort amongst everybody who has a stake in the coast to really provide adaptation. And we really have to think about it collectively and not just on a parcel-by-parcel or a project-by-project basis, because that's, just ends up leaving somebody else to hold the bag for what the ultimate solution is, which, and I'm worried that the city would become the one who ends up holding the bag and responsible for expensive solutions that they're not able to implement. But with a problem that very much needs to be addressed. So with that, I think, you know, my kudos to staff, my kudos to the, you know, fellow council members, my thanks to everybody who's engaged in this process throughout the past five years and given of their time and given their expertise and given their, given their energy. We've heard special presentations from, you know, from the former head of the Coastal Commission and from. and from, from, from watershed restoration experts, from, you know, traffic experts just across the board. And it's just been a really, you know, enlightening process. And I think it's so important for us to move forward on this longstanding project now because the challenges are right in front of us, and we need the plan to be able to implement the solutions that we've identified. So, so with that, thank you, everybody, and I look forward to moving this forward.
Thank you, Brian. I'm going to interrupt before I invite Sarah to offer her comments. I understand from staff that we, a speaker who had spoken earlier tonight had additional comments. And I just wanted to ask that the, since we've had the substantive public hearing comment section, as we said earlier, we don't think it's wise to generally open the public hearing again. However, there may be some point of information that's pertinent in a regular meeting, in a normal parliamentary process. Someone in the audience could state a point of information. And so I'd like to invite that, that person who's been inquiring about speaking to email Bridget with the comment that they wanted to make, so we could understand whether there was a point of information that was urgent for the Planning Commission to hear during this deliberation as opposed to a second public hearing item. So I thank you for letting me intervene to address the closest thing to a point of information that happens at a virtual meeting. Commissioner Polgar, I think we are ready, if you are ready.
Yeah, I think I finally got my phone in a spot where it actually gives me reception. Well, I, it's always nice to, to follow Brian because, or Commissioner Holt, excuse me, because I can say ditto to what he so eloquently puts out there, puts forth. And I definitely would echo his comments with respect to the, the climate change impacts that we're, you know, facing and likely they're only going to get worse. Especially in my line of work, it's, it's pretty terrifying to see upfront and in, in person. So, yeah, I would definitely echo those. And, and also I, I think it's a very important point about thinking about how the, how we deal with this, not just on a parcel by parcel basis in terms of the things such as erosion, sea level rise, and that they, we have to have a broader approach to it because it is true that we don't want to leave someone else hanging, you know, holding the bag, you know, and the responsibility for that down the line. I, I will say that we are, as a community, we have some, some wonderful aspects of our existing land, land use that have helped us get, have a buffer to certain impacts from erosion and sea level rise, which we should be, you know, very grateful that those have, the kind of the legacy that we have right now. But we also have a lot of work to do to figure out how we're going to deal with those kind of rapidly approaching impacts. So I really appreciated Commissioner Holt's comments. And I know I tend to be the type who dives right into the details and kind of cuts to the chase in my comments. I'm generally not the fluffy type. And I'm not as eloquent as Commissioner Holt. But before, I do have specific comments, surprise, surprise, they're not a lot. I wanted to step back and just give a couple bigger picture thoughts. And basically, my perspective is through the lens of having, you know, worked in local, as a local community coastal planner, in natural resource management, conservation, restoration for the past 15 years. And so I've had a lot of exposure to land use policy. I've had to, you know, develop it, interpret it, apply it, navigate it to get permits for my projects. I've definitely seen and been party to creating, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly. Learned a lot about policy kind of in theory and in practice. So throughout my involvement in this process, starting with the, you know, as a general plan advisory committee member and all the way through today, I've really tried to use this lens of interpreting and applying, navigating the proposed policies, particularly thinking as a future planning commissioner or city staff member or somebody, you know, construction project manager like I am, you know, how they would do that. Those, that's the experience I have. And so I felt like this is where I was really value added. And so based on this perspective, I, I recognize that this final draft LUP is just such a tremendous accomplishment. And that's both in terms of meeting the requirements of the Coastal Act and in guiding our community's future according to those, kind of those broad collective community principles that we, as a community, articulated really early on in this process. You know, Brian, Commissioner Holt was, was referring to those. Obviously, we all know that a land update to the land use plan is not magically going to solve our problems. But what we need and what we have now in this LUP update is, is carefully and well conceived, it's, it's right sized in the scope and specificity. It's consistent inclusive policy framework really for, for guiding our decision-making. And that's including navigating those really gnarly, kind of uniquely challenging trade-offs that we confront on the coast side. So again, it's, it's not a fix-all or anything, but it's a roadmap or I don't, I don't really like that term, but the, it's like the toolbox we need. And so I, I really want to, you know, just say, you know, first of all, thank you to all of my, you know, fellow, fellow planning commissioners. I especially Chair Benjamin and Commissioner Hernandez for just tremendous amount of work on, the incredible work they did on the subcommittee for this and staff, especially Jill and Brittany and the city council in providing the direction and guidance on this process. I also really, I recognize the work as often, I've worked a lot in public agencies and other organizations. And so I recognize the amount of work it takes for them to be part of this process. And so, and I hear from staff that they've had a lot of great participation and engagement. So also thanks to them. And then, most importantly, the community members who've engaged and tracked this process. And obviously, a big shout out to those who are the long haulers that have been here throughout. But I also, you know, Commissioner Holt reminded us of all the different processes and, and events and opportunities. And I really want to acknowledge the many, many community members who checked in at specific times and events and on particular issues along the way that's really meaningful. So kind of that, I just wanted to step back and provide that perspective on, on the overall kind of where I see us at this point. I do have some very specific comments, but maybe we can come back after others have had a chance to, to, they're, they're really detailed, just a few things. So we can come back to me if that's possible.
Of course, it's possible, but we'll take them whenever you're ready.
Why don't we let Commissioner Ruddock and, you know, and then you can come back to me after.
Okay, excellent. Vice Chair Ruddock.
Thank you, Chair Benjamin. I, of course, I, I echo the, the thanks and gratitude and congratulations that are due to our staff, members of the community who've participated, commissioners, excuse me, the planning commissioners who've been at this longer than I have, especially the subcommittee made up of Commissioner Hernandez and Chair Benjamin. I, the other day in preparation for this meeting, I communicated to Jill and Brittany how happy I was to see the enhanced support for agriculture community in, in town and in this final draft and farm worker housing, ancillary and, and supporting uses. But as, as Rick said a minute ago, I think the most eloquent praise for those efforts came from Casey Branscombe, who has sort of been the conscience of the ag community and monitoring the evolution of this plan. So to, to hear her, her excitement about the final draft and, and agriculture's role. And it is, it's tough to beat that as a, as a praise that was very, that was won with a tremendous amount of hard work. I have just a, a couple of other comments on mainly public input that we received in written form in the last couple of weeks. Ms. King's perspective on the Casamira situation. You know, the fact that, I know the homeowners there are very agitated and they're, they're, have this, this process with Coastal Commission that they're following. I appreciate the emphasis on the fact that the city rode in support of a sea wall and that the protecting the Coastal Trail is indeed a, a thing that makes sense for the city. The Bernardo Station subdivision question, it, it feels to me like there's perhaps a missed opportunity there when the, when there was the opportunity to form a, the Dolores PD in the draft of last autumn. It's kind of perhaps a shame that the vision that some of the Bernardo Station residents now have wasn't active at that time. I frankly don't, don't think that the voiced interest in affordable housing at this late date is, is sufficient to change the zoning there. But of course, I would encourage those residents to do as, as Jill said, which is to look into the, the process, the opportunity that may exist with the, the special development permit provisions that are outlined in Appendix A, if indeed that is a vision that they want to pursue. I, at this late date, I actually find myself wanting to propose one change in policy, sort of to my own surprise, but it, it has to do with the North Wave Crest PD. And we, reading the landowners' communications of the last couple of weeks and harkening back to similar comments that Mr. Callan made at, at earlier hearings, I am sympathetic to the idea that a phased approach to the North Wave Crest PD may in fact be logical. You know, the, the new LUP, when you look at that map, the North Wave Crest is two non-contiguous properties separated by open space for conservation. They will not be accessed by any common shared access point, Wave Crest Road in the north and Redondo Beach Road in the south. So I, I, I think that there is some logic to having a policy re-North Wave Crest that would make it explicit that a phased approach to that, that, that southern half of that that is, is worth pursuing. And I apologize for having this insight so late to the, in the process, but I figured better late than never.
Not at all. This is the right time to consider. The right time is anytime before we recommend it. So no one should feel inhibited by raising questions now or suggestions now. Please do not.
Well, thank you, Chair. That's all I have for this round.
Okay, thanks. Let me take a bite at this apple. First, thanks, as everyone has said before me, ditto. Thanks very much to staff. I've been doing this for a while now. I could not ask for a more supportive, more careful, more competent staff to work with. And I'm very, very grateful for, for the support all around 360. Thank each of you. I also appreciate the insights of my colleagues. You have educated me and helped me get a perspective outside of my own. And I think that's what every public servant needs. So thank you for, for that. Also, the members of the public who have been generous with their, their comments to me, kind when I stumble. And that is, that's a grace that comes with being in a small town. It always, doesn't always come with being in a small town, but it, it's worked out fairly well. This document is a compromise. It, I don't think it, I don't think any of us would look at it and say it carries every policy that we like and no policies that we, that we don't like. And I too have a short list of policies that I think probably, they're mostly in response to changes since the last time we had a public discussion, just, you know, the, the meeting that we would have had and discussed when we had a continuation and then the additional changes that we saw in attachment to, to tonight's agenda. So I will, I will raise a couple of those points, but I would like to speak to some of the public input that we got tonight beyond appreciating and echoing the comments that my colleagues have made. I read with as much care as I could the extensive public input that we received as part of the staff report on Friday. I want to acknowledge, having gone through legal adventures of my own, that it is, that reading of pleadings can be a daunting task, but it was a helpful document to read, as was the concerns that the, the public at Casamira have raised. There were some questions in my mind about the details that were presented in that document. By way of illustration and not, not to be exhaustive, there was a reference to Measure D not having ever been fully subscribed. And I would just respectfully suggest that's not the case. I have sat on a planning commission that had to draw a line below which Measure D allocations would not be granted. So I know that there has been competition, competition for Measure D's through personal experience. I am unaware of where all of the sea wall or revetment or wherever the constructions were. There was a reference in some of the documents that there had been quite a bit of construction of reinforcements along the coast. And while I'm interested in understanding where those are, I will confess to being skeptical about where they are. Maybe it wasn't about the city of Half Moon Bay, maybe it was the geography of Half Moon Bay, including the unincorporated areas, so that, for example, it would include the land that was part of the harbor. And so I say that in seeking clarification rather than some accusation of misstatement. But I, I do think that my colleagues are right, that ultimately this is a systemic problem and it can't be solved on a case-by-case basis. And in fact, even if the city of Half Moon Bay or the county of Half Moon Bay, sorry, the county of San Mateo and the city of Half Moon Bay were to take a unified approach on this, there would be at some point an exterior that would be flanking erosion where the problem would persist. Thinking about this systemically makes it really daunting to try to present an approach that saves everything. And I can assure you that you are not the only people who have these concerns. I think everyone who lives on the coast, who's taken a walk along the bluffs, has looked in some areas and they've noticed the foundations of homes that are partly at the edge of the bluff and probably partly already have been washed away. So I, I do appreciate the concern that you've raised. And I appreciate Winter's observation that we are determined not to commit a takings as a, as a policy matter. That if it turns out that there's a takings issue, we have a policy that says we're not going to do that. So that is part of this draft, and I hope that it is a source of some comfort. With respect to the Wave Crest Restoration Area, I have listened to Mr. Callan's comments for quite some time on the subject. And I appreciate that Steve is interested in trying to understand phasing. I would just suggest that, again, that if we take a systemic view independently of the infrastructure, the Wave Crest area is, it has resources and impacts that are, that need to be understood as a whole. Decisions that are made in one area have an impact on the resources that might be useful in another area. So I am certainly open to a phased development process, but I feel that the area as a whole needs to be understood before that phased activity takes place. So I hope I'm being clear. It's not that I don't, I don't think about this phasing. I'm just looking for the the overarching perspective of the specific plan for that area before we go into development in in parcels. I feel like our existing LCP has not always been administered as carefully with respect to development at a planned unit development area as it probably should have been. And I don't lay that at the feet of any particular planning commission or city council or coastal commission. I think that there's enough credit and blame to go around in the way we administer our work. So I think that that's a, you know, but as a broader policy question, I think it's, you know, the decisions to deal with specific plans or precise plans or master plans as an approval matter is really initiating those or considering those is in the domain of the city council. We can certainly encourage them to think about that if the commission thought that was a good idea. I think that they need to make a careful assessment about that before they move forward. And there's certainly nothing to preclude us from revisiting that question down the road as we move into our implementation plan work, maybe with the benefit of Coastal Commission staff and city council insight into how they feel about that. Wave Crest has a very storied history in Half Moon Bay for those who are familiar with the evolution from the Westinghouse days. So I have a feeling that saga is not over, but my experience is that it's, you know, it's very easy to take a step forward. It is almost impossible to take a step backward. So I would advise going with great caution in that direction. With respect to some of the policy advice we received, I will just touch a couple. I actually have, for me, I only have eight or so, so I'm not going to go through too many of them. Maybe we can rattle Robin so you don't get tired of my voice. But I would just like to get a little bit more insight into the policy, I believe it was two dash six. This was a policy that was kind of the social justice, environmental justice policy with respect to housing. And they suggested that we add language that we should provide equitable access to environmental benefits. I don't that sounds like a really good thing. I don't actually know how to do that. I, you know, if it were, let's say, a subdivision that was made up strictly of a mixture of affordable and market rate housing, you know, maybe the implication is that the affordable housing units shouldn't be excluded from having a nice view looking down the hill or a view of the riparian area, or I'm not sure. But it was a suggestion from Coastal Commission staff, as I understand it. And I'm hoping to get clarity, if you have it, or maybe as part of preparing, if we think it's clear enough to move forward to the city council with this, maybe to get clarification to benefit the city council when they were to consider this. There was also a one at the other end of the document with respect to flood hazard zones that said the base flood elevation, this was policy, actually it wasn't policy, it was in the text of the document, with respect to flood hazards. It was on page seven dash thirty-eight, page thirty-eight of chapter seven. And the the latest change said that the BFEs, the base flood elevations in Half Moon Bay range from nineteen to thirty-eight feet. And I will confess to being a little God-smacked by that. When I read the flood maps, I think of them as a distance above grade where the flooding happens, you know? So if you're standing at a spot, you're at two feet. Above that, maybe for what it gets that high, that context constitutes a base flood elevation. But the idea of nineteen or thirty-eight feet means these must be above sea level. And it's really hard for me to understand how to use that information as a planning tool in a place that has so much variation in height. So I'm not disputing what the map says. I'm just unclear on how we use it in policy. So again, maybe not something we need to clarify tonight, but it's something that I think we owe maybe additional clarity to the city council before we we get there. So I'll knock those two off my list and invite another round of comments from any commissioners who would like to go second round.
Commissioner Hernandez has his hand raised.
Commissioner Hernandez, I am muting.
As general rule, I'm not one to quibble with Commissioner or Chairman Benjamin. The fourteen to thirty-eight inches seems as if it's been pulled from some other documents. I would like
Point of order, Rick. It was the document says feet, nineteen to thirty-eight feet.
I'm looking at a seven thirty-eight, and I'm a little confused about that. So I don't see nineteen to thirty-eight feet.
I understand the problem. You're looking at the binder, but there was the attachment that we received with the staff report, Attachment Two.
Got it, got it, okay. Well, separate my comment. I'm I'm confused by what's in the binder versus the I'm confused by this versus what we've otherwise received. So as usual, as I as I prefaced my comment, quibbling with you is usually not a good idea. I will support your comments, though, and say I am also reluctant to make changes to any PUD at this late stage, especially Wave Crest. As we've already conveyed to the public and Winter King has affirmed, we do have remedies that exist outside of this policy document. This is not a zoning document, and I think we have many ways to address some of the specific concerns that have been raised by specific landowners about properties. I think we've done city staff in particular, it's done a yeoman's job to address the concerns that have been raised. So I'm going to go look at the attachment and on on section seven, and I'll come back to you if I have any other comments.
Sorry, it's on page sixty-seven of Attachment Two, Rick. Sarah, did you want to lay in?
Sure. So I would also echo your Chair Benjamin, your comments about the about the Wave Crest kind of tree looking, the way you look at it in terms of, I think it's it's somewhat deceptive that, yes, it is true there by the kind of the the colors on the map, it's looks like two separate areas, but it is a contiguous area. And to think of the landscape as kind of suddenly being two separate areas in terms of ecosystem functions, et cetera, that's not that nothing else has changed in that respect. It's just that we've drawn some lines on the map. And so I don't think it's a good idea to 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 piecemeal it in terms of understanding how things function out there because, you know, there are certain habitats that maybe can that have a connectivity, and you want to understand that before, as you point out, it's you, once you take a step forward, there's not a lot of opportunity to go backwards. It takes a lot more work to fix problems. So I I'm not, I I agree that making a change, I I'm not comfortable with a change at this point. I certainly, you know, the city council wants to take that up. That's that's fine. I just I'm just from this perspective of kind of how we look at it, I I don't feel that I'm ready to support that. I I have a couple, like three kind of really specific changes, and so I do want to bring them up because they're they're things that and they they relate really to the most recent changes that came out with the packet on Friday.
Please.
And yeah, so I let me just go through those if folks don't mind. So one of them has to do with it's related to policy six dash seventy-three, which in our binders is on page six dash seven, six dash forty-eight. But in the revisions, the first of all, I this is something about habitat restoration project permitting. That's the kind of the new title of this policy, six dash seventy-three. And I just this, I can tell that this is response to a lot of kind of feedback that I had about how the 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 LUP can in practice be supportive of habitat restoration, which frankly, we need at a really large scale that will it will really benefit or help us be more resilient to a lot of the climate change impacts. This may not be make entire sense, but once you start to think down the the kind of the implications of doing habitat restoration and the benefits, it's really a multi-benefit opportunity. So my a lot of my comments were about how we can is in our policies really make that more feasible and and support it because we have a policy already in here about supporting that. So I see and I really appreciate how this, I think this policy, the staff did a great job in providing a clear policy basis that facilitates and enables habitat restoration projects as well as ensuring that these projects protect coastal resources, you know, has the right checks and balances. What I'd like to see, the specific thing I want to see changed is just to remove the last phrase, which starts such as. It's it's not needed. It's also actually not a substantive change to this policy. I do think it's important, though, to remove it because if, as I mentioned, I'm always thinking about, well, how would I, if I were a future staff or, you know, planning commissioner, how would I be applying, interpreting and applying this policy? And when I see this language, which is such as, it gives a, you know, removal of debris, litter, or invasive exotic species, limited fuel modification with non-mechanized or non-motorized equipment, that really that suggests that this policy really only applies to a very limited scope of restoration activities. And frankly, you know, that example is like a volunteer habitat cleanup, you know, restoration workday event. And so I, you know, we, I I'm, it's pretty obvious to me, we don't want to imply that our encouragement and facilitation of habitat restoration projects in Half Moon Bay is limited like this. We want to actually encourage restoration for, you know, that would, you know, help us with, you know, restore hydrology that would help habitats as well as flood, you know, green infrastructure type of projects, et cetera. So I just really want to be careful about that, you know, I think it's an easy thing. It's non-substantive, and it will also help in future interpretation of this policy just as a practical matter. So that was one. Another one is it's policy six dash sixty-three, which is construction and ESHA, environmentally sensitive habitat areas. And, you know, I I understand that some of the changes in this policy that happened most recently are really a result of conversations with the Coastal Commission. And I certainly understand the intent of this policy, but there are just a couple of things that are really problematic, especially when you're considering it in tandem with the policy I was just talking about for habitat restoration. So I guess the first thing is a really easy additional or fix to this policy is to add the word adversely in front of impact to say that the no adverse, that they don't adversely impacts, construction doesn't. I think that's important. And then, based on my understanding of this policy, it seeks to protect sensitive species that are in ESHA wetlands or watercourses from construction impacts. So I would just suggest rewording it to be a little bit more accurate about what we're trying to do. So ensure that construction does not adversely impact sensitive birds or other animal species in ESHA wetlands or watercourses. So changing the language a little bit to reflect it because that's that's essentially what the Coastal Commission was commenting on and wanting to strengthen in this. And then make sure that it says by requiring construction projects to implement best management practices. I think that's fine. I think that there needs to be for the latter two things about noise and vibration reduction and monitoring by a qualified biologist. Those are things that would really, you're always going to want them to implement, to do best management practices. And, you know, and those we give some examples, those are really, they'll vary based on the project. But it I think it's appropriate to say for the next part, and as appropriate for species protection, noise and vibration reduction measures and monitoring by qualified biologists. I think it's important to include that, and here's why, because you can have, first of all, they should be tailored to the needs of the project. You don't want to over-prescribe something that's not actually making the project more protective of species like that's that's a waste of of resources. But also, then, if you have the way by rewording this to make it clear that you're trying to not adversely impact the the species, you're assuring that you're not keeping construction projects from actually doing that are construction for habitat restoration from being able to do those projects. It you it basically, you could end up precluding us for precluding our our or kind of standing in the way of our policy that we just laid out about habitat restoration. So it's it's nuanced, but it it's a little bit, you're, I think it's important because it's getting at what the what we what we've been asked to make sure we protect, which is those sensitive species.
So
And yeah.
I'm be sure I captured the comment in my mind. So adversely impact was the first change here. What was the other change?
The other, it would say, ensure that construction does not adversely impact sensitive birds or other animal species. So say that first. That's that's what the, you know, say that first, and then you can say, you know, it does not adversely impact sensitive birds or other animal species in ESHA wetlands or watercourses. And then that'd be the first part. And then by requiring construction projects to implement best management practices, and then there's the EG example. And then I suggest adding the phrase, and as appropriate for species protection, the last part, noise and vibration. So there's a few changes in this I'm recommending, but it's to make it in in practice, practical, practicable. I don't know how you say that, but did it, did you get get the changes?
I understood it. I I want to digest it, but go ahead. Thank you for
The last one's just a little, it's almost like a typo thing, I think. I just noticed that in the most recent changes to chapter six, the word stream was added in a couple of places. But to be consistent, the document should be saying watercourse. And in fact, in another policy, we actually had removed stream to to put in watercourse. So I just wanted to point out that we just need to make sure that that it just was, you know, confusing to add stream. We should be, it should have said watercourse. That's all, to be consistent.
Okay, thank you. I guess the last one, I think I get the the general thrust, but this is a big document. It's hard to make a change without knowing where we want to do it.
Oh, so an example that that happened in on page or policy six dash forty-nine, Riparian Corridor buffers. Suddenly, we added stream to to describe the the watercourses rather than it, we should just said watercourses.
Point of order. State your point of order, please.
I I don't think anybody would on this commission would complain about Sarah's point. Maybe we could generally, unless she is opposition, we generally agree to the proposition she's put forth, and she could provide written comments to the specificity of where we're using stream and placement of watercourse, and we can just move forward. But I agree with what she's saying.
I I don't disagree offhand, but I, there is some nuance there. The kinds of protections that we use in streams might be a little different from watercourses. So it's helpful for me to get a sense of where it is. And so I it's not that I'm disagreeing or want to slow down the works here. I want to be sure I understand it. Sarah, could you just repeat the policy that you used as an example?
The policy is six dash forty-nine, Riparian Corridor buffers.
Got it. I will go to that. And while I'm waiting, that, did you say that was your last one, Sarah?
Yes, and I'm sorry they were so specific. It really, I mean, as you can tell, these are like, you know, detailed things, but
That is fine.
This is a chance to, and and they were based on things that had recently changed. So apologies for
Right. Brian, did you have any additional? Are you okay? Steve, did you want to go again? Steve, did you want to go again?
Well, I wanted to elaborate a little bit on what I had in mind, read the North Wavecrest P D. I certainly don't disagree with what you said, Chair Benjamin, after my comments. What what I was trying to communicate was the concept of obviously comprehensive master planning for P Ds is essential that that development gets done in the right way. I was advocating that there there might there might be a change in this policy that would say that phased master planning of certain aspects might be considered. You know, for instance, as you and Commissioner Polgar pointed out, it is one interconnected ecosystem out there. So one could possibly imagine an E I R that covers both halves of that of that P D and then phased phased proposals for the southern half continuing independently and in a phased fashion. I do know, though, that our staff report on this matter states that master planning is not a new requirement for for this L U P, obviously, and that the final draft L U P policies anticipate that some phasing may occur. So so perhaps what I'm arguing for is is not essential. I I suppose that the the this concept that the current policies might allow phasing would be due to would rest on your interpretation of what comprehensive master planning means. But that's all I was that all I was driving at, and I I certainly share everybody else's interests in in that proceeding in the in the proper and comprehensive fashions.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Can I through the chair? Can I ask a clarifying question? In this, I recall this from the staff report as well, what Commissioner Reddick was referring to in terms of the that there is a mechanisms for phase planning is can staff, you know, point us to or elaborate how that might work or what what that looks like in the existing
I don't know. Can staff?
We would be happy to do that. Thank you. So in chapter two, the section in the development chapter about plan developments begins on page. I don't know. Page two thirty eight, where we begin to talk about comprehensive master planning. And some of the things that we suggest throughout the throughout the policies, for example, policy two dash forty nine, master plan standards, describes a number of things that need to be included in a master plan. And phasing needs to be part of the considerations for master planning. There could be an area that's getting master planned where it would be developed in one phase. And so clearly, that's that's not a concern, but for the most part, these areas, we would anticipate that they would develop in phases over time. So master planning the whole area and then identifying some of the the key parts of phasing them in as they come forward. Some of these things have been brought up in commission discussion in the past. So, for example, one of the earliest phases that we would assume we would see is infrastructure brought in, as well as we've we've heard from commissioners that you want to make sure that parks and open space are accounted for in early phases. That's really typical to be very careful about things like that because sometimes development doesn't pass forward into future phases. And if you you leverage off those benefits that were supposed to come with the project as a whole to future phases, they might they might be left on the table. So those are those are some of the components of phasing in master plans that were anticipated in your draft document. We did not include the idea of phasing from the perspective of having more than one master plan or more than one specific plan in an individual P D. That's that is something that was suggested, we believe, from the language that we see in the nineteen ninety six certified land use plan for Wavecrest, specific to Wavecrest. We don't see that with the other P Ds. So we're just sharing with you. We we went back and looked through all of the nineteen ninety six P Ds as well from from reading the comment letters and listening to the comments. You know that the key here and the approach of the P Ds has really been a focus on being very consistent. And so that's why those factored policies, as we call them, were were developed to be as clear as we could be, to make sure that there was less of this kind of there's there's some soft language in the ninety six document right now where it's not always clear what kind of master plan is required for some P Ds versus others. And so we were trying to be really more more consistent with this.
Was that a clear enough answer, Sarah? Thank you. So I'm I think an example of of a P D that was planned and then implemented in phases that was sort of, let's say, high, high level of master planning before beginning to develop in pieces was Pacific Ridge. Everybody knew that there were going to be three phases of development in that in that project. It was pretty clear what the big picture was. We knew where the the open space de restricted areas were going to be. There was a a sequence that led us to allow development in phasing. In some ways, it was easier because the land had common ownership. But it might be that there's some level of high some amount of high level planning that can happen for the area as a whole. And then, as Jill suggests, maybe we could drill down in some areas and do more, even if the the area isn't in complete ownership. But that first that first step of having a really clear inventory and knowing how the resources are going to count, that seems really vital to me.
Through the chair, may I ask Jill a question on this topic before she?
Absolutely.
So so Jill, if I heard you right, I think you you mentioned that the current policies, when they talk about phasing, they're not really talking about geographic phasing, you know, dealing with the oddity in a case like North Wavecrest where the two non contiguous properties would in your judgment, if 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 we wanted to consider that, would it require a new policy or a change to any of the existing policies?
I'm still processing your question. I'm thinking about I want to reread the nineteen ninety six little bit. I have it right here.
While while Jill is doing that, I'd like to return to some of the suggestions that Sarah had put up, if I may, so that we can multiplex. I note that it is now ten ten, so at some point, we're going to need to continue if that's the will of the commission. I think ten thirty is our normal cutoff, so we'll need a motion at some point when we get close. With respect to I can't remember whether it was six seventy three or six sixty three. I wanted to point out that in some ways, the language in the draft proposal mirrors the language in the Coastal Commission's regulations with respect to what requires a coastal development permit in areas that are exceptions from the normal exemptions. So I'm thinking of C C N Rs one, three, two, five, two. Someone like Sarah or Winter or Jill probably knows what I'm talking about. These are these are sections of code that say, you know, it's okay to develop this thing without a coastal development permit, or you can get an exemption from a coastal development permit unless you're, you know, within a hundred feet of an E S H A, for example, or something like that. And in those cases, because of the risk, you you would have to get one, especially if, for example, it includes mechanized or motorized machinery. So my guess is that the language that's being proposed is tracking the Coastal Commission's model for when you would need to get a permit and when you would not in that area. Does that make sense? It does not make sense. Okay. Winter, does it make sense to you?
I was just going to look up the regulation you cited because I haven't done the comparison between these. I don't know if Jill or Brittany has thoughts on it.
Maybe Jill knows the answer. She's got the aha look.
Well, I have the aha look because I'm working on the P D that I'm I'm thinking Brittany probably has something to provide here.
Yeah, I think the E G clause provides some similar language to the Code of Regulation where certain activities can bump you out of a C D P exemption and into a C D P requirement. What I would point out, though, is that while there could still be a C D P requirement, it could be processed in an expedited manner, such as through a waiver, where it's a project that is not explicitly allowed to be exempt, but perhaps proposes sufficient protective measures, best management practices, avoidance measures to negate the need for any additional conditions that the deciding body would would want to impose. And then it could be a waiver.
So that is a really so, you know, I you're shredding my model of how the most complicated things I visualize is a coastal development permit. A somewhat easier thing is an exemption. And then a thing that is de minimis, no really no risk of harm, that's a waiver. And that's at least how I have have a sort of that's my mental model of what, you know, and even the waiver has to, you know, it's going to be issued by the executive director of the Coastal Commission. And if a couple of commissioners are irritated by it, they can knock it off, and it has to go through a normal process. So what you're describing sounds like it's still a C D P, but it's like a boilerplate C D C D P because it goes so fast. I'm I'm lost, maybe.
No, no, you you are close. The exemption would be the the quickest of the options that that you just named. A waiver would be the next quickest of the Coastal Act and the implementing regulations list really specific exemption allowances. Anything that is not explicitly listed automatically needs a C D P if it meets the definition of development. So then in between, the Coastal Commission has a C D P waiver process for things that are not explicitly exempt, but may not need any additional conditions of approval.
So so let me turn back to thank you. Thank you, Brittany. So let me turn back to Sarah and try to understand whether there is a relationship between the scale of the project and the risk of harm to the environment. Because my sense is that, you know, take out a couple of trees at P G and E, you know, you're not you're a long way from habitat. Okay, I get it. Maybe maybe it would be nice if that could be exempted. But isn't there a scale at which it doesn't work very well?
So here's what I would say is that scale is important, and especially when you're talking about habitat restoration. So you want we we want to encourage larger scale habitat restoration. And there is a benefit to being able to I I'm not sure you wouldn't necessarily I don't think you'd see an exemption, obviously, but to a process where you have like a waiver where you've laid out, here's what's expected, the certainty, knowing what you are going to need to do to comply is anybody who's ever had to apply for a permanent permit is going to tell you that's real helpful. And so I think that when you have a process that lays that out for what that is expected of habitat restoration, you're making one it's one more step to make it a little easier to encourage that. And that's what I saw this accomplishing. But if it if it's basically then implies that it only that if the policy by offering up this such as implies that it only applies to removal of debris, litter, exotic and invasive exotic species without not with non mechanized and non motorized equipment, I'm sorry, but the restoration we need to get accomplished, you you need you're going to have to to move some dirt, and it's not going to be by hand. And so what you've already it it's it is true, like when you say such as, it doesn't mean that that's all it includes, you know, but you are sending a message about how you want this interpreted. And I'm saying that if we really want to see the the habitat restoration that we need at the scale that we need it to to really benefit the the species, the habitat ourselves in terms of our resilience, particularly around things like coastal flooding and, you know, localized flooding, et cetera, those types of projects require bigger scale planning and bigger scale action. And so I hear what you're saying. Yes, there is when you when you scale things up, you're right. You could you can definitely have greater impacts, but that doesn't necessarily need like it's still valuable to try to facilitate those projects. Those those are warm and fuzzy projects. They don't have development dollars behind them. And so I guess what I'm saying is that you have a great policy to lay that lays out a kind of says, hey, we want to facilitate this, and we think that one way we could do this is by having some some streamlining of permitting. All I'm saying is that the the one example, the there's only one such as, and it's basically a pretty small, like not not, I mean, frankly, it's it's something that would have a C D P exemption, like, you know, anyways. So it's so I guess what I'm just saying, it takes the punch out of it potentially in terms of interpreting.
I I I learned a long time ago to try to make when I'm having a dialogue and there are different opinions, I try to make the other person right. So I'm looking for a way to see it your way. And what I think you're telling me is large scale projects need a way to move through the permitting process more efficiently, that that's what makes it so hard. And I would just suggest that we might be trying to stretch the waiver process in the wrong direction to do that. Maybe or maybe there's a special type of waiver for great big projects, just if you, you know, I know the word waiver sounds appealing, so I don't want to jettison that. But, you know, if there were a boil, you know, if this scale of land modification were straightforward enough that we could satisfy the no significant adverse impacts coastal resources without detailed investigation, then that and that's what the language of the proposed policy is, then maybe there's a boilerplate coastal development permit that can do that, and it's not an exemption, and it's not a waiver. Maybe it's a it's a good coastal development permit project form that can be reused. You know, I'm I'm not trying to add regulatory.
I don't know. Can click can through the chair, though, can they can you clarify? Because what I just heard is that that doesn't exist, that there's kind of these three things.
Oh, I'm looking at I'm looking at policy six seventy three as it was presented in attachment two today. So that's on page fifty of attachment two. And it's talking about projects when they are a waiver process for habitat improvement projects that constitute development. And this language actually proposes to remove minor de minimis because they're talking about no adverse impacts to coastal resources. As I understood your suggestion, you wanted to remove non mechanized, non motorized from this policy, right? Can't hear you. Oh, you're you're on mute. Sorry.
Sorry, I would suggest moving just remove the such as, such as the removal of remove that phrase. It's. It's, I think that it's, and, you know, if you want to leave it in, it's fine. I'm just saying that if someone interpreting policy down the road, I'd look at that and then, you know, basically I'd say, oh, okay, that's what you mean. Well, that's a pretty limited scope. We aren't gonna get a lot of, like, restoration if we apply this policy in that limited way. I, I, when, yeah, when I, so it's, it's, it is non-substantive. It's more a matter of, again, this is the frame of reference that I always look, you know, I tend to review these things as the person trying to apply it, get a permit through it. And so I like the policy otherwise. I mean, and if, if we want to leave, if that's, if that is the language reflected in, it sounded like you were saying that was the language from, such as the removal of, is from some other policy language. I'm not familiar with that from the Coastal Act, but.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a statute. It's not in the Coastal Act. It's in their implementing regulations. CCR 13252 makes a reference to projects that would otherwise be exempt, have to get a coastal development permit if they involved work in a, in a NSHA involving mechanized or motorized equipment, left stuff in the area. There were a series of rules. And I think grading might have been in it too, although I'm a little bit rusty.
I guess the whole point of this to me is that we're trying to encourage restoration, habitat restoration. Like this, this whole policy is about restoring habitat. The whole policy is about it. And so it's not about, and you want to maximize that and make it as, facilitate it. And that's what the policy is about. And I just saw that last part as doing the exact opposite.
But the first part of the policy does that.
Through the chair.
Yes, Rick.
Just, just, just a point of order here. I think that we're really down in the weeds, and I would love to get staff's opinion on this. But, but I think Sarah, as a practical, Brian and Sarah, both of whom do this from a practical perspective, probably have the strongest practical opinions. I, I think that we're concerned about earth-moving equipment as a general policy, but as it pertains to habitat restoration, not golf course creation, but habitat restoration, I think that, I, I don't think there's a lot to quibble about here. Mr. Chairman, just, just, I, I think we've spent a lot of time on this topic. I just feel like we're, we're focused on the wrong details. And I apologize if I've gotten this out of context, but I just, I, I've recently hiked through some of the restoration projects that Commissioner Polgar has worked on, and they're massive. I mean, they're huge, like, multi-ton pieces of equipment trying to move, you know, multi-ton pieces of stuff around. It's, it's massive. Like, you can't do the kinds of projects that we really care about that will protect us from climate change unless you have some of these types of things. So I just, I'm trying to raise the conversation higher, sorry.
So I appreciate that. I am not opposing the projects that involve those big bulldozers and moving tons of stuff. I'm saying I'm skeptical that they can be processed without, I think the potential to do harm is remarkably high. So I am cautious. I will say, certainly, we can agree to disagree. I think that the headline of this policy is where the money is. It says streamlining permitting processes whenever possible to facilitate successful completion. So right there, again, Rick, this is in the Attachment 2, page 50. So that section gives you a potential applicant a basis to say, here's a way to do this. And the parentheticals at the bottom are not, are not intended to limit the ability to do stuff when no significant adverse impacts occur. So, you know, my, my personal view on this is that removing the reference to non-mechanized, non-motorized might be a flag to the coastal commission. They didn't comment on it specifically, and they obviously were on the policy. Otherwise, there wouldn't be, actually, I shouldn't say that. Are these your suggestions, Sarah, in Goldenrod? Or are these coastal commission? Are these coastal, are these staff, Jill?
The yellow highlights are recommended changes from coastal commission staff.
Coastal commission. So, so they saw the document, and they didn't, they didn't ask for, I would say try, you know, you might lobby them before you propose it here. I'm a little concerned about, we've seen some pretty arbitrary stuff come from, come through the coastal commission, or at least to me. I, they probably have great nuance that I don't understand. So I, I'm okay going either way. It wouldn't surprise me if they put it back to me. I'll put it that way. So I'm, I'm willing to get along here.
I, here's what I would say is that it's not worth it. It's, it's, it's non-substantive. It's just, at this point, it's not. I really didn't think this would end up being such a big point. So, so I would, I would defer to staff to decide if this is something, frankly, that's worthwhile proposing. I, I don't, in terms of, you know, I'm not willing to fall on my sword for this.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. And then on, actually, we've been talking a long time. Does anyone else have something? How about a motion to continue the meeting, since it's now 10:27?
I make a motion to continue the meeting.
Can you use the words, could you please, through the chair, use the words extend?
Extend, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I, I, I make a motion to extend the meeting until 12:00 midnight.
12:00 midnight, is there a second?
A second.
Lots of seconds. All right. Roll call, roll call, please.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yes, thank you. And then with respect to 663, the, I, to me, that sounded like a pretty reasonable change because as appropriate means you're tailoring the mitigations to the circumstances. My sense was that, I didn't realize that the policy would be construed as demanding noise mitigation where it didn't exist. But if it feels better that way, I'm good with it. Okay. Anybody else have any others that they want to do? Okay, I got a couple. Let's see, let's look at the revised version of Policy 5-64, please. That is on page 45 of Attachment 2. And I just want to say I agree with the notion here. Mike, and I spoke about this with staff earlier today. And my understanding is that the goal was to see 100 feet is the minimum, but that the language could be misconstrued as saying it could be adjusted downward or upward. And I think the goal is to say no less than, but greater distances could be required. Am I capturing that right, Jill?
We are nodding yes, and we will, we can tweak the language. We understand.
Okay. Then there was Policy 6-89. This was one that I thought was interesting. So you'll see that on page 49, where we're requiring a grading permit. And at the, and what we're trying to do at the, at the back of it is say permitted grading in or adjacent to an ESHA has been replaced by any grading in or adjacent to an ESHA. And I just wanted to get clarification from staff about what changed, what, what we did that was new here.
I can try to clarify. So the policy begins with requiring grading under certain circumstances, including earth moving, exceeding 50 cubic yards. The change at the last sentence was intended to continue, intended to capture any amount of grading, not just the amount that requires a grading permit.
Is there, is there grading in an ESHA that's not permitted? In other words, we struck out permitted and we put in any? And I'm just visualizing what the, what the unpermitted grading is in the ESHA. Is this ag?
So the policy does provide an exception for tilling or other earth-moving customary, customarily related to ag operations. The change, though, wasn't intended to hint that it would be for unpermitted grading, just that it is for any amount of grading, whether it requires a grading permit or not. And this would, of course, be associated with any of the limited permitted uses in ESHA, such as restoration.
Okay, I think I understand it better now. I, you know, I had misgivings that somehow we were kind of opening the door to unpermitted, you know, they would kind of go, we could go rampant. And nobody wants that, I know. But I thought it might be an unintended consequence. So I think that's, that'll be okay. Let's see, 661 was an interesting one. I think this was a response, I think, to some policies. So that was 661 was the one about vegetation restoration and tracking it. So you'll find that one on page 51. And I think, I'm guessing, our dialogue, I think Sarah and I had talked about this. I think that, that having prescribing a percentage of coverage within five years is kind of arbitrary. And in some cases, it actually works at cross purposes because it can take longer for vegetation to establish itself than five years, right? So we want to, so striking the policy that says it has to get done within five years kind of made sense to me. On the other hand, E, the next policy, said we're going to be monitoring for a period of at least five years. And I just think we ought to clarify that if we're saying that the restoration of vegetation takes longer, we need to monitor it until it's restored. And I don't, I don't think that this policy, Section E, precludes that. But it would be nice if it said, you know, during the period of re-establishment of vegetation or something. What are your thoughts about that?
I would just point out the last sentence of E, which, which does allow for extending the monitoring period if the established performance standards are not met. I think that addresses, could be clarified if.
Okay, so if the, so if the, if the performance standard is re-establishment within, say, 10 years, and we're only, and at the end of five years, we haven't hit, we haven't done, the re-establishment's not complete. So we would invoke this last sentence and say, we're not done. We need more monitoring?
Yes, I think that's a fair analysis. The policy also clarifies at least five years, so it is not specifically tied to a five-year limit.
Yeah, it's a four, not a ceiling. I've got that. But you know, my experience in the planning commission is that fours frequently become ceilings. I'm trying to remember the last time someone told me, we don't need 20 feet away from the edge of this intermittent stream. We can settle for 25. So I, I appreciate the clarification. And I know colleagues that I'm in the weeds here, but this is our last bite at the apple. So I, I hope you'll bear with me. 645, Policy 645? This is a new policy. Sorry. Yeah, this was the new policy that was added by the coastal commission. ESHA policy applicability. I don't disagree with the principle. It's basically saying we have a bunch of policies. This one applies in this flavor of ESHA. These other policies apply in a second flavor of ESHA. What I was missing in this policy was the aquatic habitat for special status or unique species. So maybe I'm just not, maybe I was tired after reading 800 pages. Do you, do you understand my concern? Jill?
I just want to double-check your policy number. We have Policy 645 as man-made ponds and impound.
Yeah, my, my, my bad, I doubled back. Oh, you know what, I searched for 645, and instead of getting Policy 645, I got a different policy. Let me go to that one, 645. I apologize. So in this one, my understanding is that we may require initial studies. Let me see where that was. That is the wrong policy. My bad. Scratch that. I apologize. Let me instead direct you to page 55. There's a brand-new policy that was proposed by the coastal commission, according to intent. And this is, it, it kind of introduces where applicable policies will be applied, right? And, for example, 16, 618 through 620 for marine environment, 621 through 622 for sea cliffs. So I find myself sort of ticking off the different kinds of issues and what policies are going to be there. And I found the policies for non-aquatic habitat for special status or unique species. But I didn't see a policy for the aquatic habitat of special status or unique species, which could be different than the policies for the, for the aquatic, you know, for the wetland or for the riparian corridor or the pond itself. Am I, are those, are those protections always better than the protections for the, for the creatures? Or is there something missing here?
The policies for wetlands and watercourses include protections for special status species, particularly in the policies that start with standards for development in those specific types of habitats. The other more general policies, such as 663, which we were looking at earlier with respect to construction in habitat types, those are also intended to apply to all habitat types. In that case, we did add some clarification that it applies to ESHA and wetlands and watercourses. But that is another example of where there is a land use plan policy that provides protections for special status species that applies broadly to all habitat types. And then in addition, there are these habitat-specific policies.
So if we were, let's say someone came to us and said, I've got this riparian corridor that's unstable. I need to do a bank stabilization on the project. And someone said, wait a minute, there's aquatic habitat for protected species here. What, what steps are you going to take? Do we have policies that, that tell us, oh, because that's, let's say, habitat for coho salmon or steelhead, let's say? Do we have policies that allow us to limit the work to the right season, that we're not going to affect them? Do you, do you see the thrust of the question?
I do, yeah. So in that case, I would look at the standards in riparian corridors, Policy 6-48, and that's on page 6-43 of your binder. And subsection E would, would apply in the example you're providing, as would Policy 6-63 for protections during construction. for protections during construction.
So we really, so based on that, we don't really need to call out the aquatic habitat for special status. It's subsumed by aquatic protections.
Correct.
Okay, I understand, thank you. Anybody else have anything, or am I, am I running solo here?
Well, through the chair, at some point, I'd love to hear the results of Jill's research.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jill, give me a break.
Sure. So to, let's, let's go back to your question and just make sure that I heard it right. You asked, we were talking about phasing and plan developments. And you asked it really about how much flexibility the policies as written in the draft plan would provide for phasing. I think it was the upshot that I had. There's plenty of flexibility in terms of within a master plan for the PD as a whole to determine how many phases, the purpose of the phases, the location of the phases. So there's lots and lots of flexibility about phasing. This doesn't foreclose any of any of those lots for planning PDs that way. If you're looking for having specific plans or master planning for a distinct and separate part of a PD area instead of the PD as a whole, we do not have that covered. That's not something that's that's brought into this, into this document. This document's really looking for a comprehensive master planning to really get at a lot of the things that you were participating in the discussion with Chair Benjamin and Commissioner Polgar about looking at resources, the mapping as a whole, the way the land area is interacting, probably not just with biological resources, but also the often drainage and anything that has to do with water is going to come up through that process. So that's, that's the kind of the distinction in terms of looking at the area as a whole with a, a specific plan or a master plan of some sort that covers all those, those sub-criteria that you see in the master planning policies.
So if I, if I may, through the chair, ask you a follow-up question. Well, Noel, let me hold off on that. I appreciate the light you've shed on it just now, thank you.
So I have one more policy. I hold in my hand the last policy question I had. And that was policy four dash thirteen. You'll find that in attachment two, page thirty-seven. That is the biological resources and agricultural operations policy. And most of the changes seem fine to me. The one that caught my eye was that it used to say, continue to allow legally established agricultural uses within Eshas and wetlands and riparian corridors and their buffers. And now, the proposal is to strike the word legally, so that we're just going to continue to allow established agricultural uses and operations within Eshas, wetlands, riparian corridors and their buffers. Now, I understand that there, we have legal non-conforming uses, things that have been around before the Coastal Act, just like things that have been around before the current zoning. And we're not trying to ex post facto law force them out of what they were doing. But if there was a unpermitted change, let's say, that put a bridge, let's say, over a riparian corridor or, you know, diverted water from a stream or something like that, that was operating without the benefit of any permitted process when such a permit was required. I don't know if what established means in this context. If enough time passes since something that shouldn't have been done has been done, are we simply shrugging and saying, that's the way it is? Is that what's proposed here?
So, thank you for the question. It's, this is a challenging area because so many of our agricultural uses predate the Coastal Act. And the, and our city attorney's going to help help us out on this one. But the, the concern that your staff has is that what does legal really mean then? When there are uses that are, they've been going on for a long time and they never would have been faced with getting any kind of a permit to start doing open field agriculture, whatever, whatever they happen to be doing. So that part of it, our focus on it is about those operations that you would be most expecting and frankly are supportive of in the policy document that you've been reviewing. Something along the lines of the example that you just described. We do have policies about pre-development and development that really should have had some kind of a permit at some point in time. And it's quite likely that what you described should have had something. The Army Corps very likely would have been interested in a permit for something like that way back when. So there's, there's different hooks along the way for looking at these things. I'm looking now for, if if Winter's here to to fill in a little bit more on, on the thing.
She's smiling and waving.
Is she smiling and waving? I don't, I have her on my screen.
Your loss.
Oh, gallery view, hi, Jill.
I'm in gallery view, I was, I was watching our public and making sure that they didn't have any issues.
I just had a couple of thoughts. One is, I think the city will have some discretion in interpreting its own document in terms of what it means to be established versus non. So I think there will be some room in the interpretation there to figure out the appropriate boundary. And I think importantly, this is not going to prevent the city from code enforcement. So if there is a new code violation, there's nothing here that would prevent the city from undertaking code enforcement on that. And again, I think, you know, established is not a term of art and that is something that the city can determine where the appropriate line is here in terms of what's established and what's not.
I confess, it makes me nervous. But maybe this record will be enough for the city council and they can decide whether they like it or not. Or I don't know if my colleagues want to weigh in, but I, I do worry about, you know, the ability to interpret this in politically convenient ways. You know, I want to try to have a, a sharp, consistent model that would stand up to scrutiny if someone were to challenge it and say, why not me? I feel like there's a risk that this could be capricious. So that's my caution, but perhaps I'm in the minority and I can let it go if that's the case.
I, I'm sorry, go, go ahead.
Please, Sarah.
I guess one thought I had is that I, in hearing what Jill, what you had to say about this, as well as Winter, your comments about our information about kind of the interpretation of this, I, I would like to leave it as is or as amended with the not having legally because I think this is a case where there are the, the policies and precautions in place or available to to deal with kind of the bad actors. I think if we're trying to be supportive of agricultural operations, this is, you know, this is, this is trying to be supportive of agricultural operations. And I, I'll be honest, I don't love designing policy for the, the worst actors because frankly, regardless of how much you throw at them, they're still going to do bad things. And so it all, the problem is, there's a lot of folks out there who try to follow the rules and you're only making it harder for those who are really trying to follow the rules. And I, and I think this could be a case where it, it doesn't really make it, achieve a better outcome by trying to make it more restrictive. That, that's, so I, I wouldn't want to change it. I agree, like, maybe the, this is something that the, the city council may want to weigh in on. But for me, I would, I would prefer to leave it as amended or as, as recommended in the staff report. Just because of how, like, I, I, I hear you, there's always going to be bad actors, but designing, designing policy for the, kind of the worst of the lot is basically makes policy that's just really difficult for, you know, the rest of, the rest of the folks. So that's kind of, that's where I stand on that one.
Okay, fair enough, any other comments? There was a, a conversation about wetlands that was ancillary. I thought I was going to raise it in the context of the document. It was about whether a road could be built to access development where the, where the road crossed over wetlands. And I was looking for the section of the document where I was going to plant my flag and say, I don't think it can, based on a careful reading of Bolsochika. But I've lost the spot where it appeared in the document. So I, I apologize for that, that exercise. I was, I was ready to lay that out. The coastal commission has very clear guidelines and the courts interpreted that in a pretty unambiguous way. But maybe that's a subject for another discussion rather than, rather than tonight. Other than that, I am fresh out of topics to bring to your attention. So last call for topics before we consider a resolution. All right. In that case, I'd like to just check to see if there's any additional. Since we didn't have any segmented areas, then there are no special votes that needed to have been taken before this. So I think there's no reason why we can't proceed to consider the resolution next in order, which was attachment one. Any final comments from you colleagues or any thoughts from staff before we go there? Yes, Brian?
No, I don't have any further thoughts. Sorry.
Okay.
I was not raising my hand.
All right, in that case, I see no reason not to entertain a motion. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, I would like to entertain a motion that we move forward and recommend approval of adoption of the land use plan, local coastal plan to the city council. Sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me, I'm trying to look at what the actual resolution language is. There we go, thank you.
Resolution of the planning commission of the city of Austin Bay recommending, you got it.
The question is presented on the screen.
Thank you.
The doctor resolution recommending the 2020 final draft local coastal land use plan update is recommended to be revised pursuant to attachment two to the staff report through the half of the planning commission for approval and adoption.
So, and we had it, I'm sorry?
Oh, excuse me, Chair Benjamin, I think you were maybe going the same place. There were a couple of recommended changes to the policies that Commissioner Polgar suggested. So if your motion would like to include those recommended changes, I think it would be probably appropriate to include that in it as well.
Yeah, we include those, include those recommendations. I'm not sure how to best summarize those now.
For the record, can, through the chair, do you mind if staff summarizes what we, what we heard for these? Just to make sure we captured all of them.
That would be helpful.
All right, first of all, policy two dash six, the quote, with equitable access to environmental benefits. We were not requested to change the language, but we were requested to review the language with the coastal commission. And if there are changes, clarify it, we'll bring those forward to the city council. For policy six dash sixty-three, wording, adding adversely before the word impact and adding as appropriate for species protection before noise and vibration. Policy five dash sixty-four is, I recommend a change from Chair Benjamin regarding, we discussed this about making sure the language is clear that the hundred-foot setback is a minimum in all cases and that that otherwise language that we added to it is, is worded a little bit stronger and doesn't leave any gray area. The rest of the policies, we did not, I, in my notes, I did not conclude with changes. We saw, oh, stream versus water course, sorry. In the document, we're clear that stream and water course are used interchangeably. However, and, and the policy that was honed in on, on this particular case was language from coastal commission, I think they use the string nomenclature more often than water course. We will go back through and either consider changing that one to water course or just clarifying at some other place in the document how those, those terms can be used. Yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair, sorry, I, there was one clarification about six sixty-three. Just to be clear, I think it, I do think it's worthwhile changing the order to clarify that it's to ensure that, to ensure that construction does not adversely impact sensitive birds or other animal species in Esha wetlands or watercourses. That, just switching the, the, the beginning sentence makes it clearer what, what we're trying to do. And I do think it matters in terms of how it's applied. But otherwise, the changes were correct, like, that was.
No, I'm, I forgot to mention, staff picked that up, but thank you for bringing it up. That's, that's right. You, you did already cover it. Did we miss any?
My, my only other note was about the Michigan flood base elevation. But I didn't have a policy change.
Right. We will, we will add that one to double check the flood base elevation and confirm.
Thank you. So anybody have any additional changes that were missed? And if not, that's okay with the maker of the motion?
That's absolutely.
Could I have a second, please?
I second it.
That was Vice Chair Riddick. So, a moment to reflect on the vote you're about to take. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Hernandez, where did you go?
Yes.
Commissioner or Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
Yes, thank you.
Ocean passes.
Excellent, thank you very much, everyone, for some very good work tonight. The next item on our agenda then is the director's report. And take it away, Jill.
Thank you, I'm going to pass on it tonight. I was assuming we would be late and I did not have time to prepare one. We'll see you in two weeks, where you will see your continued item, twenty-nine oh nine, Shang Tsui Le Sei. And you'll, you'll see a number of addendums coming through for architectural. agendas coming through for architectural advisory committee as well as director hearings and administrative decisions. We will update you in a couple of weeks about the measure D item going to council on September fifteenth. And then we do want to emphasize next steps on this project, which, what you have done tonight, which will be to move, move this item to city council through a special meeting at September twenty ninth. It's the only meeting on their agenda, or item on their agenda. And it's a two part hearing. Second part will be October sixth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In that case, we'll move to the planning commission communications. Does anyone have a communication to your colleagues? Okay, in that case, I think it is time for adjournment. I would take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Polgar?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt? Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riddick?
Yes.
And Chair Benjamin?
No, just kidding. Being adjourned, thank you all and have a good time. Bye, everybody.
Take care. Be well.